Now we'll move on to item six, public hearing. City clerk?
Item six A, hold a public hearing and adopt resolutions approving fiscal year 2021-22 operating and fiscal to fiscal year 2021 through 26 capital improvement program budget, approving city appropriation scan limit for fiscal year 2021-22, approving the cost recovery policy and updated user fee schedule for fiscal year 2021-22.
Turn it over at this time to the city manager to begin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Javon Groban, City Manager. I'll be assisted in this presentation with our by our Finance Director, Chin Yusun. In addition, all of your department directors from every department are available. Some of them are with me in this room. We are not wearing masks because we are all fully vaccinated and compliant with the new OSHA requirements, so it's nice to be back to a little normal. And so why don't we begin? As the city council knows, this is the meeting where we have planned deliberations on the budget and there are several action items before each night. And we have a presentation to go through a number of items, some of which you've seen before, some additional items related to decisions connected to both stormwater and the Measure G Committee. As the council knows, we did have a meeting just prior to this where you did provide staff with direction to utilize ARPA funds for the million dollar stormwater deficit. And so that is within the presentation and for time efficiency sake, we will skip over those slides because we had that discussion at the prior meeting and clear direction from the city council. So our objective tonight is on the screen. It is to hold the public hearing and adopt a number of resolutions connected to the operating and capital budget for next fiscal year, fiscal year 21-22. As a reminder, we operate on a July through June, July 1 through June 30 fiscal year. And so this will take us through July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022. Approve appropriations related to the city's GAN limit as well as adopt changes to our master fee schedule for the coming year. Our agenda is as follows. There are a total of eight, I'm sorry, not eight, my Roman numerals, 13 sections on this presentation. We will talk about the general fund enhancements. We will recap reserves quickly. We will talk about enterprise, internal service funds, our capital improvement program, Measure G, vehicles, GAN limit, user fee schedule, alternatives, the request to council, and then have questions and discussion with a number of the items. There are decision points for council. We can pause should the city council want to have those discussions at that moment or we can complete the entire presentation and go back to those sections. Why don't we begin? So as the city council and members of the public will recall, this is our fourth meeting to review the proposed budget. It began with our meeting on June 1st. We had a presentation of the overall budget and a number of questions from the city council. We then had our first budget hearing on June 8th and our second budget hearing the day after on June 9th, and we are here today for final deliberations and adoption. As a reminder, the city's overall budget is $193 million, all funds, that's all of our sewer, water, stormwater, city net, general fund, and all of our special revenues. So to provide programs and services to the citizens of San Bruno, the proposed budget envisioned spending $193 million inclusive of operating and capital. The baseline budget includes 246 FTEs. Council knows that that is less than 24 positions that were either frozen or eliminated during the prior budget cycle due to COVID-19 and our need to trim the city's budget. There are 104 capital improvement projects and the total general fund budget, which is our general checking account, is $51 million. This slide is a high level summary of the 21-22 general fund revenues, expenditures, and transfers. So the projected beginning fund balance is 2.6 million. Revenues is just under 50 million at 49.7. Baseline expenditures was 50.9. That leaves a deficit of 1.2 million with the ending fund transfer of 1.4, an ending fund balance of 1.4 with a transfer for Measure G that is proposed that we'll talk about that will be aligned to specific service categories of 0.6 or 600,000 with a projected ending fund balance of $2 million prior to the general fund enhancements that we'll talk about shortly. With regard to overall revenues and expenditures, I know the city council has seen this several times during our budget presentations. This is the exact same pie graph. Notable is when we look at our revenues, our property tax and sales tax together make it 45% of our baseline general fund revenues, 24% for property tax, 21% for sales tax. With regard to our expenditures, the largest share of our expenditures at 58% is for police and fire, our only two 24-hour operations, operating departments. And now I'll turn it over to Chin Yusun, our Finance Director, to take us through a few more slides with regard to general fund operations.
Thank you, Javon. Honorable Mayor and members of council, Chin Yusun Finance Director. Here I would like to give you some revenue highlights. We talked about this before and then here just a reiteration. Our property tax is going to increase moderately with the housing market remaining pretty hot. So tax will increase by 11% when economic activity increase after the state fully open. Of course, we have already fully opened since the 15th of June. TUD will increase by 72%, but still more than the half behind the pre-COVID level. Vehicle license fee, which is biggest source, source spot where will be 9% lower as most schools are converting to basic schools. Thank you, Mayor, for issuing the letter to the state legislators and the governor. Hopefully, the state will come up with additional funding to make us go in the upcoming year. That will be a lifesaver for us if that happens. And here is a look at the general fund revenue. You may have noticed that we made some automatic adjustments to the proposed budget. So on the, on the, on the second right, second column to the right, we, I don't, the column called the, made the post-proposed budget, we made some minor adjustment to the cost allocation of revenues. So you see some minor differences, but the total difference is not very substantial. With that adjustment, we're still seeing the total revenues for general fund for the next fiscal year is that it's almost 50.3 million dollars. Slide please. For expenditures, we all know that expansion costs is really a big factor for increasing costs, increasing expenditure in general fund. And another big increase, our health and insurance cost and all the union and we use are subject to negotiation by the end of this calendar year. The step, we, under the city manager's guideline, we develop a status quo baseline budget, meaning the reduced staffing in the current years and all the recovery in the baseline budget. There's a limited ability to enhance facility infrastructure maintenance. There is still, there still is a significant backlog of capital projects and then we're not making any decision, easy decision in this, in this meeting. And I do hope that the council provides support for the staff and then for the city in our next year's operation. General fund expenditure, there's minor adjustment to the proposed budget as well. For all in all, we're going to see the general fund expenditure still hover around 50.1 million dollars. This isn't just a breakdown by departments. I'm not going through that one by one. Slide please. Now we're talking about the general fund summaries tied back to one of the slides that I talked about. What we are beginning with the general fund balance for the next fifth year at 2.6 million is 2.573 from the top. And the operating revenues is about the 50, 50.3, that's including some fund transfers and as was, such as the 600,000 transfer from Measure G. Total operating expenditure is going to be about 50.9 million dollars. We're seeing a debt surplus, we're seeing a deficit of about $600,000, but bear in mind that, that, that deficit will increase if we take the Measure G transfer out of it. So we're seeing a, been ending fund balance with this proposed budget at almost $2 million. Next slide please. Here, we want to take a like, take a look at our general fund restricted reserve and comparing with our reserve policy target. General fund has a policy target of 1.5 million dollars. With this proposed budget, we are going to see the balance at about $2 million before the enhancements. General fund reserve is about $12.3 million, which is slightly behind the 25% annual budget expenditures target. General fund capital reserve is exceeding the target of 5 million to be at 5.4 million, but 50% of 9.49 is really designated for the rack project. That's a YG box. Emergency disaster fund is slightly below the target of 3 and 1, 2.7 million dollars. All in all, our general fund restricted reserve is going to be about 26.3 million dollars at the end of next fiscal year. We, although we have 20, 26 million, our restricted reserve doesn't mean we have 23, 26.3 million in the bank. We do have some significant deficit with enterprise funds. The enterprise deficit has, has to be covered by general fund restricted reserves. These deficits are the city service funds at almost 50, 14 and a half million dollars. And we also had talked about the stormwater is going to enter a $1 million deficit. So the subtotal of general fund restricted reserve is just going to be about 10.1 million at the end of next fiscal year. Together with our equipment reserve, we have about the net reserve of 14.1 million. It's not so substantial at this level at all. Next, I'll have us back to Javon. He's going to talk about our enhancement request.
Thank you, members of the council and the public. When we, as we talk about enhancements, I wanted to begin with a slide that we talked about at our first budget meeting on June 1st. And so in the proposed budget, we included funding for a number of new city council strategic initiatives in the amount of 1.388 million, just under 1.4 million. And so they're listed up here above and I'll run through these really quickly. There's a downtown street sweep implementation and architectural services for 300,000 that was proposed to be funded by Measure G. Upgrades to our channel, to channel one, wildfire mitigation and fire prevention of a total of $244,000. That was both stacking as well as 150,000 to do brush clearing this year. A new economic development manager position, conducting a water and sewer rate study, installation of down, beginning the process to examine and install downtown parking meters and wayfinding signage, adding an additional $75,000 to that budget. $70,000 for our portable housing plan implementation, 60,000 for rent writing assistance, work to begin developing cannabis regulations of 40,000. Funding to help supplement the budget to replace our newspaper racks and enhance holiday decor of 25,000 for holiday decor at City Hall in downtown. And that's for the total of nearly 1.4. In addition, we recapped a number of city council strategic initiatives that were not included in the proposed budget and for various reasons, we went through these in detail last time. If I point out a few, just with the east-west street sweeping alignment, it's important to note that with the unsuccessful storm drain and flood protection fee, costs to begin and undertake this effort are currently unknown. So the fund is currently $1 million in deficit. What we said last time is that we would need to fully analyze the cost to undertake this. It would significantly increase the workload for street sweeping and certainly have a, have a cost implication that may be offset in the short term by revenue from fees. But what we know with street sweeping is that once people get a ticket a few times, they, they move the car. And so you don't fund street sweeping off of citation revenue. And so we knew that it would be an additional cost, but the cost was not, is not identified yet. Without that revenue, we would need to look for other funding sources. Climate action plan, we're exploring a partnership with Style Line College. Citywide performance metrics, we mentioned that we would plan to issue an RFP and bring that proposal to council. Charter city, knowing that that's an initiative to work on, that coupled with the initiative of a transfer tax may be cost positive, but certainly the work would undertake a cost. We haven't identified those costs just yet, but we would return to council once those costs are known. Summer closures of downtown Saturdays and Sundays, we were not able to identify or budget the cost for that. The adopted drain program was a strategic initiative that we, at the time of developing the budget, did not have a cost for. With regard to small business attraction, it's important to note that there is a proposal for, I believe, 112,000 that we'll be talking about shortly. And that was added during the proposed budget discussions with respect to a program that's being run by the Bay Area Entrepreneurship Center. But as far as enveloping a larger small business attraction program, there, there was a position or there is a position recommendation for an economic development manager that we were going to look to that manager to help, help us with developing that program and then break forward any financial recommendations. But funding for cozy park, there's an estimate of 500,000. There, there has been a financial ask to Measure K for a portion of this money that we're waiting to hear back on. And of course, the community fiber agreement of 12.5 million that we do not have the resources to fund at this time. In addition, there are 540,000 of general fund enhancements that are included in the enhancement request. This 500,000, as the Finance Director mentioned, when you have a projected ending balance of $2 million and you add this, we would, we were projecting to end at the policy limit of 1.5, a fund balance. I won't go through all of these because I know we've talked about them several times. And we can return to any of these that council would like to address, but in the interest of time, I won't go through them all. There was a question, however, about the city manager's office professional services budget that we did clarify by email. So that 150 is made up of three components. It's funding for the cannabis initiative of 40,000, funding for the grant writer at 60,000, and an additional 50,000 for a general professional services budget in the city manager's office. And so I know the city council has received that. All of these others we've talked about, happy to return to in the interest of time. A number of them are, have one-time costs, many of them are offset by additional revenue. And so the net impact is at 540,000 that you see in the bottom right-hand corner, which is shown on the, on the first slide. With regard to proposed ARPA American Rescue Plan acquisition funding, so we again discussed this significantly during the budget cycle in our prior budget meetings. But these are the positions in the revisions to the proposed budget where the first direction from the city council was to reduce the Measure G positions. And so we added the three positions from the bottom up, the part-time services, the senior building inspector, and the executive assistant to the city manager's office from measure, from other sources to here. And then the senior planner, as we talked about at the last meeting, was an additional add during the budget cycle, given the level of workload that we are currently experiencing in the planning department. But the, the funding need for that position is only 25% because we, based on the current development pipeline and reimbursement agreements, we know that we can fund that position at 75% funded from developer reimbursements. And so that brings us to this slide, which brings, presents the total of that ARPA funding as a glide path to restore a portion, but not all of the positions that were reduced in the prior budget cycle, and also having strategic additions tied to strategic initiatives and other items. And so in that second proposed column for 2021, it's the 112,000 that we mentioned for business grants on top of the 290 that the city council has already awarded in the current fiscal year. There's proposed CIP funding of 750,000 and position funding of 1.5 that, as a reminder, trails off by 25% each year. And so based on our regular revenue growth in the general fund, with the general fund picking up 25% of the cost of those positions each year, and by '25, '26, having those positions fully covered in the general fund budget. And so out of the $10.2 million of ARPA funding, the proposed funding through '24, '25 connected to these recommendations is 7, 7,350,000, leaving just under 2.9 million. As a note, this does not include those four positions that were originally recommended to be funded by Measure G. As we talk about Measure G, we all know Measure G is our half set sales tax that next year is projected to bring in 3.5 million. There's the ballot language there for Measure G that I won't go through because we talked about it before, but, but know that all of the proposed budget recommendations align to language within that ballot measure. With regard to the Measure G funding, there are three columns here, and I want to pause here to have the Finance Director begin the articulation of Measure G and the Measure G funding recommendations and the meeting that we had with the Citizens Revenue Oversight Committee on Friday and their recommendations to council. And then we will continue with other discussions.
Thank you, Javon. I'll just run through the progression of Measure G proposed throughout this budget decision, budget development season. So Measure G, as we expected at the end of this fiscal year, is going to have 1.25 million dollars in fund balance, which is much better than we had projected in the last budget season. We are going to expect the revenue coming in for the next year is about 3.5 million dollars. So they, that provides quite a bit of funding in Measure G for potential appropriation for the city's general uses or intended for the Measure G election ballot purposes. So originally, in our first version proposed budget, the city manager proposed to, from 1.4 million street project with Measure G funding, and then 300,000 for streets, street street, and then 804,000 for positions, and 600,000 for general, transfer to general fund to help general fund achieve the fund balance target. And then there's another 240,000 for the payment trust. After discussion with the council during the study session on June 8th and then 9th, the council expressed concern of Measure G funding for positions. So we moved some of the position out of the Measure G funding and you can see in employee position line, it reduced from 804,000 to 517,000. Everything else remained the same several weeks. We believe the fire, citywide fire mitigation is in line with the spirit of Measure G election that began, so we moved that 150,000 into the many proposed budget after the discussion with the city council. Last Friday, we met with the Citizens Revenue Oversight Committee. The committee members felt that Measure G funding should be used for street projects, so they approved unanimously for the street project, CIP project 1.4. They also felt $150,000 for fire mitigation was appropriate to usage of Measure G funding. And then they also allowed us to use the 240,000 for the payment trust. So we, that's the difference, the progress of the Measure G proposal in the budget season. As you can see, the, with the various different proposals, the ending balance of the Measure G is going to be well above a million dollars. With the, with the most right column, keep the most of the balance. If, if we don't, we're only allowed to follow the Citizens Revenue Oversight Committee's recommendation, then Measure G funding will have almost $3 million in fund balance and then next fiscal year. Back to Javon.
Let me expand upon the discussions at the Oversight Committee and point out a couple things. It was nearly a three-hour meeting and a very, very robust discussion. The committee really understood the challenges facing the city, I believe, but, but in light of the ARPA funding, really thought that before utilizing the funds as proposed, we should look towards ARPA. It's certainly connected to positions. In fact, the, the committee felt that it was not appropriate to use the funds for employee positions, even if there was a path to gradually progress off of that. In addition, we had discussions with the committee about potentially other things, rural projects, but also other areas of the city that could use Measure G funding. And what we committed to them was the same thing we committed to the city council, is in all of these scenarios, there is additional Measure G fund balance to look for additional rural projects first, where those funds could be applied, should they be able to be executed, key point executed in the next fiscal year, given the current capital program, which is a significant capital program. There, there may not be the ability to, to add on to some of our, our street projects, but we've certainly looked to see if there was because we know of the interest in improving our roads and doing it as fast. The other point that I, as fast as we can, the other point that I want to make to the city council is whether it's 1.5 or 2.9 left in ending fund balance, that should not be looked at as a, as a bad thing. We know that slurry seal is the cheapest rural treatment, but some of the more expensive rural treatments, the reconstruction or the grind and overlay, cost several million dollars, even if you're only doing a few block segments. So to let a little money accumulate in Measure G so we can do larger projects is not necessarily a bad thing, but we know that there are a number of pressing needs, which is why the proposed budget was structured by the, the way it is. Certainly, the committee recognized that the city council is sitting in a different seat and has a host of other things to consider, but they felt very strongly and comfortable with their recommendations as, as they decided. with their recommendations as they decided and as presented in that final column. With regard to funding decisions related to Measure G and ARPA, we did want to call out four key ones based on where we are now. And it's essentially, let's consider these funding decisions related to new information. The first one certainly is stormwater that we've talked about, so we won't go over that. The next three are connected to the Citizens Revenue Oversight Committee recommendations, and then that's considering the proposed general fund-funded employee positions, the transfer from the general fund or transfer from Measure G to the general fund to support public safety and parts maintenance services, and then funding for that downtown street plan implementation, a council strategic initiative. And so if we step through these really quickly and we can absolutely return to them. With regard to number one, funding the stormwater deficit, we talked at the prior meeting and the city council provided directions to use ARPA funds, and so we will sort of go through the slides connected to that. Key point that if you do not fund the four positions, you have enough, and if you do fund the four positions that were due to be funded by Measure G, you have enough within ARPA to do both, to both fund the stormwater deficit for one year and those four positions on that twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five reduction plan to gradually allow the general fund to think of the full cost of those positions. With regard to number three, the transfer to the general fund to support essentially the baseline budget, and the city council articulated before to just not tie these expenditures to fund balance support or blanket general fund support, but instead too articulated for key items. And so staff did provide a subsequent information to council that's on this screen, which is sample allocations of six hundred thousand. On average, a police officer is a hundred and fifty thousand, as well as a firefighter. And so two police officers and two firefighters are three hundred thousand dollars apiece, and that would cover that six hundred thousand. Or you could fund one police officer, two firefighters, one parts maintenance worker, and a portion of the parts maintenance operating supplies. But this is again sort of basic support, not additional enhancements, but basic support for the general fund baseline. And it's important to note that this allocation is really connected to COVID-19, or this proposed allocation is related to COVID-19 and the immediate financial impacts that COVID-19 had. And so what's on the bottom third of that screen is a summary of, in the current year, this current adopted budget, both the committee and the city council supported and adopted utilizing two million dollars of Measure G funding to support the city's baseline budget to essentially prevent further reductions in services to the community. In the proposed budget, we were able to drop that from two million to six hundred thousand, and so that's a one point four million dollar reduction in just one year. And so when we talked to the committee about this, the committee understood this, but one of the things that was noted in the committee's discussions was that there was not a concrete plan to, that was articulated, to reduce that last six hundred thousand down to zero to some time period. And so we did understand that and accept that constructive feedback. But at the end of the day, the committee thought that they did not want to recommend additions to the city council, would recognize that the city council has a host of other decisions and challenges with regard to the budget. And lastly, connected to this transfer, it is important, so the general fund projected ending fund balance with the Measure G transfer and the general fund enhancements is one point five million, which was targeted to meet the city's policy target. If you pull that general fund transfer out, the general fund projected ending fund balance will be nine hundred thousand, so lower than the policy target of one point five million. And so professionally from staff, I do believe, while I understand the committee's position, it is important that we end with that one point five million dollar target. So I would encourage the city council to think about allowing that transfer and having check-in points during the fiscal year with the hope that we'll not need it, maybe we'll have additional revenue, but understanding that meeting those policy targets are critically important. The last item of the downtown street skate plan, a council strategic initiative, and so our initial recommendation in the proposed budget was utilizing Measure G funds. Given other items and where the committee landed, I did want to proffer to the city council that one funding source is utilizing the city's general fund capital reserve and one-time initiatives fund that does have a projected ending fund balance of sort of a net of five million dollars. And I called it a net of five million dollars because that takes out that four point five million that, remember, is in that balance, but is planned to be used for the recreation aquatic center next fiscal year. And so really, with the RAC funding, there's five million dollars available, so you could utilize three million, or three hundred thousand from that fund to cover this. The challenge is that there are a lot of pressures on that fund and our capital reserve fund in general, which is why tied to Measure G, we thought it was appropriate, but that is certainly a decision for the city council in your final budget deliberations. And so that concludes those discussions on those items. Next, we have a few slides with regard to the enterprise, internal service, capital improvement program, equipment, gain limit, and user fees. There's approximately ten slides before the end of the presentation. If it's, my recommendation would be, I would turn it over to the finance director to complete those ten slides, will complete the presentation, and then engage in council questions on the presentation and the rest of our agenda deliberations. So through the mayor, is that your pleasure?
Unless I'm seeing any nods of negative, I would say yes, proceed with the last ten. The GAN thing is pretty straightforward and user fee we've gone over, but let's summarize it. So please proceed with the last ten slides.
Perfect, thank you, Director.
Thank you, Jerome, Mayor, and members of council. Let me continue with the enterprise funds. So as you all know, we have four enterprise funds in the city, water, wastewater, stormwater, city gas services. The water wastewater funds are not going to see any rate increases for next year. That's a council decision trying to relieve some economic pressure on our residents. So, but those funds will stay healthy for the next fiscal year, but this picture may change with a long range view, which we talked in earlier sessions. And then stormwater, we talked about, is going to see a one million deficit, and city net is going to see a fifteen and fourteen point six million deficit. Next slide. Next one is our internal service funds reserves. So for internal service fund, we have a long goal of maintaining the twenty-five percent of annual budget expenditures for three of the funds, like central block, garage building, facilities, and technology. I want to let you know, none of them is going to remain, will be able to achieve that goal, actually. So our reserve for these funds at the end of twenty-one, twenty-two as a state dollar amount is between fifteen percent to about eighteen percent of the budget. But internal service fund usually have allocation from all departments to replenish, to provide a funding source. We have gone through that proposed budget development. All the departments are really having a lot of pressure on expenditure. It is hard for them to come up with additional money to support internal service funds, so we take a decision to reduce the fund balance target to have at least at a fifteen percent, but we're not able to achieve twenty-five percent of the internal service fund. That's a target, that's a hopeful, but that's not the minimum. Minimum, we're happy, our policy has the minimum set at fifteen percent. So all in all, the internal service fund at the end of next fiscal year will be having about one point seven million. Proposed CIP budget, as we talked before, the CIP budget is going to support a hundred four capital projects, sixty, almost sixty-one million is going to carry, are carried over appropriations, the new request amongst point five and five million. A total CIP funding appropriation for the next fiscal year is eighty-six point five million dollars. For the entire five-year outlook, our CIP actually carries a hundred and twenty-three million dollars. And this is a list of equipment and vehicle purchase requests that we talked about during our discussion on June eighth, June ninth. We, with the equipment replacement fund, we're hoping to purchase four, four police intersectors for three hundred and twenty thousand, one to a CNN medium man, forty-five thousand, and one community service for two fifty and fifty-five. And also, we're going hopefully to replace all the, at least some police patrol rifles at a hundred and forty-sixty-six thousand, and then a command vehicle for fire department at thirty-five thousand, and then the pavement repair truck is two hundred and forty thousand, and this funding is coming from Measure G. And then additionally, there's a couple of equipment for community service, fifteen thousand dollars for the junk beer mower, and then eight thousand four more trailer. So all in all, we have equipment replacement of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, vehicle replacement, four hundred and twenty thousand, and then there's some new refrigerators, three hundred and sixteen, three hundred and fifteen thousand. I believe the total adds up to closer to, to over nine hundred thousand dollars. Next, we're going to talk about the GAN limit. GAN limit is a voter-proving initiative to limit amount of tax-generated revenue based on the fiscal year in seventy-eight and seventy-nine budget, adjusted each year with the cost of living and population growth. This cost of living and population growth are data published by the Department of Finance with the state of California. The adjusted two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two appropriation for the city of San Bruno is well below the limit by twenty-eight percent. Next, let's talk about the draft cost recovery policy. The council reviewed the draft cost recovery policy during the meeting on March second, two thousand twenty-one, and this policy provides a framework for the city council to communicate to the public why these have different cost recovery levels. Once this policy is established, it would be reviewed during the future user fee update or when the city council review is necessary. And this policy will create some flexibility for staff to respond to unusual circumstances or unique opportunities in its pricing of services. The cost, Jerome. The cost recovery policy has several levels, full cost recovery or near full cost recovery, such as building permits, we are hoping to recover the cost at eighty to hundred percent level. And the medium cost recovery is a forty to eighty percent level, and the typical example is the middle school recreation program. The low cost recovery is at a below forty percent level. One good example is the senior launch program. The proposed user fees we talked about in the several study sessions, with the council's recommendation, we're making a series of updates and changes. So currently, the total number of fees is about five hundred and forty-seven, and there are two hundred and seventy-three increase, the ten with the increase, eighty new fees, a hundred and twenty-one fees will be as the current level. There is a sum of deposit based upon cost of recovery twenty, twenty-one. There is also thirty-four fees that vary depending on the cost recovery. My presentation.
Okay. So that takes us to our action items and Q and A. So the action items are to hold the public hearing and adopt resolutions approving the operating and capital program, approving the gain limit, and approving the cost recovery policy and user fee schedule, all for the upcoming fiscal year. Alternatives are to amend the appropriation amounts contained within the proposed budget or do not approve the proposed budget appropriations effective July one. And in this case, we have prepared a continuing resolution. Should we go there, would recommend that the city council at a minimum adopt the capital improvement budget so we do not have delays with our RAC project and our other capital improvement projects, and alternative resolution is attached to this report. But we are here, ready to support the city council through your discussions and deliberations. So again, I want to thank the council and the staff for the long process that took us to here, and again, all of your department directors are available virtually to support. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you very much to Director Sun and all in the finance department, the directors for all the time that goes into these budgets. I'm sure everybody looks forward to this time of the year, but I know it's daunting, and it's a lot to deal with, so thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so what I'm going to do is open it up to members of the public that wish to speak at this time, in case they wish to offer their comments and then depart if they need to. So again, if you wish to speak on what you've just been presented, which are the three items, the GAN initiative, the master fee schedule, or the operations and capital improvement budget, you can raise your hand now, and city clerk, if you'll bring in folks.
Yes, Paul Wapinski.
Good evening again. I got just a couple issues. First off, on the Measure G fund usage, you know, when it first came out about this being on the ballot, it was to improve the roads with the caveat that, you know, they could use it for other items. But if you go to the city's website and you look at Measure G priorities, not one of them says for personnel costs. And I'd just be careful, and my personal opinion is that we shouldn't use that for that. We should, if we're going to have to hire people, we got to take it from someplace else. Those funds should be used for what it was sold for us to use them for. My second thing is the city net's a fourteen million dollar deficit again. Is that ever going to turn a profit, or are we just going to throw money at that forever? And then during the briefing, the personnel costs that were cited, are those just salaries, or does that include the fully funded calipers contribution and also the medical and dental and all that stuff? And then my last comment is, you know, the staff and the city council uses the lexicon of city speak all the time, but we don't. There's a lot of acronyms being thrown out there, and I try to search for some of them, like the ARPR, and it doesn't come up with anything, so I don't know what that stands for, but it'd be helpful if you could spell those out or at least have an acronym list that we could look through so that we could know what you're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak on this item? Once we close public hearing, you won't be able to come back in, so now is your opportunity and the time. Seeing no other hands, do I have action from council to close public hearing?
Through the chair, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. I'll second.
A motion by Salazar, seconded by Hamilton, to close public hearing. Let's just say, I think at this time I was told we can just do a roll, I mean, we don't need a roll call. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. So I'm going to record that, and city clerk will record that as five zero in favor of closing public hearing. If I am incorrect in that statement, please correct me now. Okay, with that said, city manager, I have a comment, but, or, how best would it be to go through, that would be best, you think so, we're not going all, going back and forth, or is that how you prefer it? Because I could tell you, we could probably take on the GAN limit real quick, and I bet you there wouldn't be any, too many questions, and we all could have a win there, but what do you think, city manager?
Absolutely, uh, you read my mind. Uh, I would suggest um beginning from uh the user fee uh resolution and then the GAN limit, and I said user fees first uh because we do have consultants that are on board uh from from Will Dan who produced the user fee study as well as Craig Wyndham who has supported us through those discussions. Uh, just in case the the city council has any questions. I know we had uh two study sessions on it, uh, but uh if you, if we want to take that item and then go to the GAN limit and then talk about the other items in the proposed budget, that would be the preferred order.
Uh, I would agree. Uh, thank you for letting me know that we have people standing by, so um we are, let's go in that order, we'll go in reverse order. So the first one we will talk about is the approving the cost recovery policy and update user free fee schedule for F Y uh twenty one, twenty two. So are there questions for the uh um the recovery policy and master fee schedule? So if you uh, are there any questions for my colleagues? Now would be the time to ask the questions since we have the the folks available to answer. Yeah, Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, um, what is the effective date?
The effective date is September first. That provides staff an opportunity to advise the public, get a new master fee schedule published.
And when we last spoke about this, we talked about a phase in approach, and I just wanted to make sure can we can talk about that a little bit for those of the those members of the public who are listening?
Yes, um, one of the changes that you'll see in the actual fees um are that a number of them um are lower than what was presented to you at your, the last time you discussed it, it's in April twenty ninth. Uh, and that is a function of any large increase in fees will be um applied over four years. Um, so we had presented to you a concept of a two-year ramp up. Um, the fees now will be uh ramped up over a four-year period. So um, that is the new um ramp up period that you see tonight that is different than your last session.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions in regards to the cost recovery policy and updated uh user fee schedule? Seeing nothing from my colleagues. And and we can take the resolutions either one at a time or we can take them as we're completed with all. Um, I don't know that there's a preference, but we're gonna have to get to all three of them. Um, let's, with no other questions on that, let's move to uh approving the city appropriations GAN limit for F Y twenty one, twenty two. Are there any questions for my colleagues on that? Uh, um, Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, a procedural question, actually, as I was flipping through the attachments, I didn't notice that there was actually a fourth resolution that wasn't listed in the agenda, and it's one for um approving uh fully burdened hourly staff rates. And so as since we're stepping through these, I'm just wondering, is that one that we're going to address or are we not going to address that one because it wasn't on the agenda?
Last staff to Pine, either.
Sure, uh, it it was left off, uh, but it is connected to uh the user fees. Uh, a number of the user fees are charged on a per uh employee basis, and so it was meant to be connected to that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything on the um the GAN limit? Okay. This is the time, okay. So with those two, none other, Javon, anything on that? Because I know we have folks that are here, so anything else you want to go over before we move forward?
Uh, if I could just uh jump in, uh, mayor, um, the user fee update and the fully burdened rates are included in the one resolution you have on that item, so um that is covered, the fully burdened rates.
Right, right, uh, I think Councilmember Salazar was uh replying to referring to attachment eleven, which lists all of the the rates.
Ah, I see, okay.
Uh, attachment ten, actually, which is a separate resolution.
Right, that resolution includes the approval of both the fully burdened rates and the user, new user fees.
Uh, well, we have a resolution in attachment eight for user fees and we have a resolution in attachment ten for staff rates.
Right, let let me clarify then. Attachment eight is the cost recovery policy.
Mm-hmm.
And attachment ten is both the hourly rates and the user fees. So uh, the the city council is actually taking two options with, uh, two actions with respect to the user fees. You're setting your cost recovery policy, uh, which is uh that policy that we talked about of um the percent recovery uh on certain fee types. And then in addition to that, you are adopting the specific hourly rates and user fees uh in the master fee schedule. Does that, does that answer um the question?
Yeah, and and it was a clarification because we we listed three resolutions, we have four resolutions. So I wanted to make sure that we addressed all four since we were uh discussing whether or not we would take them all at once or individually. So I want, wanted to make sure that we didn't miss one because they are separated in the package.
As uh staffs just verifying, uh, Councilmember Hamilton on GAN or the user fee?
I would just make the suggestion that once we, once we finish um deliberation on these two, that we just take the votes on them and get them off the table.
I would.
Especially because there's a little bit of confusion on this one and we just discussed it and maybe it might be an hour from now before we come back to vote and might as well just get them done.
I would agree, especially so that we can, the consultants that are here can can uh depart. Um, Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I just wonder, I'm just wondering what the loss would be if we waited for the implementation until January of two thousand twenty two?
Councilmember, I I can't say that we uh have the information to answer that question. Uh, when we uh met uh with council at our last study session on the user fees, uh, we we talked about a September one uh uh implementation date, and so the proposed budget was um adopted with the September one implementation date uh in mind. Uh, and we did not uh carve out the analysis for um what it would be if we delayed that implementation until January. It's worth uh noting that uh there are a number of um projects that are in the pipeline that may be uh that may pay fees uh between September one and January one. And so it would certainly have a uh financial implication. Can't uh at this moment say exactly what that would be.
Okay, I just know for, I mean, my thoughts are just for, you know, individuals who may have done projects during uh COVID um because maybe they weren't working, uh, or, you know, families that have been economically impacted. To really try to give people a break this year as much as possible. So if that is something that um that would be, well, I guess we don't have an analysis either way. So if it's something that council would consider to have a start date of January of two thousand twenty two. And I do appreciate the work that's been done to lower some of the fees. Thank you.
Yeah, I think they they've been lowered as well as they've been staggered out over a period of time up to four years, and we've met on this a couple of times. So this would be holding it, having to go back for analysis, having to come back at a at a later date potentially. Um, so are there any, uh, the city manager, was there any more clarification to the three resolutions versus four, or are we okay?
Yeah, um, yeah, I went back to the agenda. Uh, there are four resolutions. Uh, on the agenda, there are three bullets, however. The final bullet says cost recovery policy, uh, which is a separate resolution and updating the user fee schedule, which is a separate resolution. And so um instead of calling it out as four individual bullets, the agenda calls it out as three bullets, but that last item includes two, that last bullet includes two resolutions. So I know that that was confusing. Uh, it is captured sufficiently on the agenda and certainly within the staff report, uh, both, uh, all four resolutions are attached. Uh, and so uh those are related to the a master fee schedule. There are two resolutions that the city council would uh like to take action on those. Uh, let me just get to.
Okay.
Those numbers.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Medina. Um, this is a lot, and I and I did want to acknowledge uh Councilwoman Mason's uh comments. Um, and I and I think, and I think I'm okay with proceeding uh tonight because those, as noted, those fees that are the most out of scale, that are, that are so far over away uh from what the actual charges are, we we accommodated those increases by breaking it up over four years. And um our, our revenues don't match up our expenditures. Um, so I I think we've done our part to 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 do our best to minimize the effect of these rate increases, but they're also necessary. Um, so um, I'm fine um um with moving forward. Um, I appreciate the work that has been done to to make this easier uh for most people. Um, and I'll be quiet now because I'm, I am uh gonna see if anybody else wants to have any comments and then we'll go from there to to uh make some motions here. Thank you.
Yes, and I appreciate that. Um, I I'm gonna say what I had said earlier, I appreciate the comment, but we've, we've met on this and um, you know, we are still subsidizing certain classes and activities. So it's not making us whole, um, it's just trying to get us back um to where we 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 need to be and we should be in some cases. You know, there are two items we're going to, uh, let's first take the approval of the GAN limit for uh twenty one, twenty two. And there's a resolution. Um, do I have any action by council?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Hamilton.
I'd like to um uh propose we adopt the resolution approving city appropriations GAN limit for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
Thank you. Sir, second. The motion, Hamilton, seconded by Salazar, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye. Next item, I I apologize, uh, city clerk. Um, item passes uh five oh. Uh, next item is the cost recovery policy and updated uh user fee schedule. Any action by council?
Uh, through the mayor, I I I think we heard though, I think these are two, right? This, so it would be, we have to vote on cost, cost recovery policy separately from user fee?
No, my understanding was one will take care of both.
One will take care of both. Okay.
Unless the city, unless the city attorney appears, we're gonna go forward.
Okay.
Oh, he just did. Oh, thumbs up, okay.
That one's good.
Okay.
Um, all right, I would like to uh 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 propose we approve uh 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 propose that we.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, thank you. The cost recovery policy and updated user fee schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
Thank you.
I'll second that one.
Uh, motion by Hamilton, seconded by Medina, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, okay, I guess that's the end of the meeting. And uh, no, obviously, we have uh the important one, which is the operations and capital improvement. Um, uh, city manager, would it be advantageous for us to take separate them or or do you want to just clump them together and let and let let the council start to ask?
Given where we are, um, I think it might be easier to do the capital improvement budget first, uh, and then uh go back to the operating.
Perfect, all right, let's uh first, colleagues, you saw the presentation, we've gone through a couple of uh budget study sessions. This is in regard to capital improvement, capital improvement only. Are there questions or comments from colleagues? Aside from that, um, I haven't, I don't see any hands um from my colleagues, so I'm going to take that as there are no questions nor concerns as to the city manager, city staff's recommended capital improvement uh improvement budget. Okay, with that said, uh, let's move on to the operational side. Um, I'm gonna begin if it's okay. Um, um, I wanna, I I think what we have to get down to, and I was trying to take notes as we were going through this, is really we're, we're, we're gonna have to have some dialogue in regards to enhancements, enhancements in the measure G. Or, oh, and I apologize, um, we had our speaker which was asking um as far as the salaries. The salaries that are being presented within the budget, does that include salaries or salaries and benefits? And then the acronym for what we know as the federal um assistance, but if you could say what the acronym is uh on that.
Sure, uh, regarding the acronym, uh, it does A R P A or ARPA. Uh, it is the American Rescue Plan Act uh that uh was was recently passed as provide, providing uh relief uh to all municipalities in the country uh due to revenue losses related to COVID nineteen. It is allocated uh based on population, and so our allocation amount uh is ten point two uh four million dollars. Uh, that money is uh due to be submitted or uh submitted to the city or remitted to the city, uh, mind you, um uh in July of uh next uh next fiscal year, so just a month or a few days from now.
And then the salaries.
With regard to salaries, all of the salary figures that we uh have shown and talked about are fully loaded, meaning that they cover salary uh and benefit, benefit costs.
Thank you. Um, so on the measure G, I think that's going to be something that we, as 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 a council, we we uh heard from city staff. Uh, uh, measure G committee has given recommendations, of course, those are recommendations to this body. I will tell you what it comes down to, obviously, and can correct me, is there sport positions, police officer, firefighter, fire inspector, economic development manager, also the six hundred thousand dollars to contribute to public safety slash park maintenance. I think those are the items of question. Um, you know, and I know we have this one-time money, is they are uh opera, but at the same time, I'll tell you, based on the verbiage within the ballot measure, um, some of these positions, i.e. the, you know, a fire inspector, the police officer, firefighter, in my mind, they do qua, they do qualify. There can be a debate on whether staffing was intended or not intended or how uh it is perceived or not perceived, and that is how people feel and you can't change that. But I will tell you, for me personally, I am going to feel very strongly um that somehow the police officer, the firefighter, the fire inspector, and I think we've all said, the economic development manager is something that's critical. So I want to see those front period. Um, I also want to recognize and articulate that police officer and firefighter positions are not enhancements. They're not new positions. Those are trying to restore to where we were, which I think it's critical for public safety in our community. That is one thing I'll tell you as mayor that makes me either stay up or sleep well at night is to know that we have the men and women uh uh serving our community. And at this last budget session where we had the departments asked to freeze positions, um, we've had departments across the board, but even in fire and police that said, hey, we we we'll, we'll get through it. We're gonna do our part. But the other concern I have too is at at some points, there's vacations, there's maternity, there's injury. There's um other elements that may have to, that that occur, a strike team has to go out. And I think it's it's the home to us to make sure that we don't pull the rubber band so tight that it snaps one day. It's not fair to staff being putting on all the overtime, the mandatorys if necessary. So, you know, I I want, I want to hear from my colleagues, but I will tell you, for me to go forward on this budget, um, it's going to have to have um an opportunity and an answer as to how we move forward, because I think we've concurred, the economic development manager, it is a new role. And on the fire inspector, that also. And on the fire inspector, that also is a cost recovery. So whatever it costs, there are going to be monies that come back in by that task that that is performed. And that is another critical necessity, I think, for keeping this community safe and keeping it pro act, rather than responding to a fire because a store wasn't inspected, or something went by, you know. And so I just want to give my first comments, and then the last one is, again, it's the $600,000 also that the city manager brought up. So I don't know how my colleagues want to take it. I see the vice mayor's hand is up, but I know the Measure G thing might be something we want to tackle. Maybe we could start tackling it side by side, if that's okay. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's probably one of the easier ways to kind of get through this. My preference has always been to look at ARPA first, when possible. Measure G, yes, is legally allowed to be withdrawn from. However, we also acknowledge, or my argument would be that it was advertised a little heavy on the street repair. And so if we could go ahead and maybe make that decision on where the funding should be from, and then go to each of the individual positions, whether or not we agree on having those. But before we go too much further, Mr. Mayor, there were some other questions that I have, but I'll reserve for now, just to see how we can, how far we can get. You're on mute, sir.
I probably sounded the best I've sounded in a long time. I don't know if, on the Measure G, if we wanted, because two are restoring positions and two are actual new positions. But I'm hearing that maybe we take, maybe that and make a decision. Now, Councilmember Salazar?
I just, you know, I wanted to opine as well, you know, Mayor Medina, you've always been a strong advocate for public safety since I've known you. You've always defended those positions, and they're definitely critical. Public safety right now eats up the lion's share of our general fund. It's huge. And I'm not doubting that the positions are necessary. But it is interesting to note that not only do most members of the public that have opined on this, as well as the majority of the members of the committee we appointed, felt that funding salaries was not in the spirit of what was still, and to the letter of the law, you're absolutely right. That's exactly the way it was spelled out, and we said that that would be an appropriate use of it. But I haven't heard anyone come forward and say, yeah, fund salaries with it. Most of the opinions I'm hearing are to the opposite. So I don't think that's a decision we should take lightly, and I think those opinions need to be respected.
Agreed. They need to be funded. If you take it out of A or B, but they need to be funded, is my bottom line. Uh, Councilmember Hamilton?
Yeah, actually, right there at the end there, you said exactly what I was going to say. I don't think there is any, I don't think there's any debate that these positions need to be funded. It's just a matter of where, and I'll echo the vice mayor and Councilmember Salazar's opinions that I would be fine with funding these through ARPA instead of through Measure G. You know, especially in light of the staggered way that we'll do it, and eventually transfer them to the, slowly transfer them to the general fund over time.
Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I think this year is quite critical for Measure G and the public's faith in this council and how we spend those funds. Last year, there was obviously the COVID emergency that was unanticipated. But I did listen in to most of the Measure G committee meeting. I'd actually like to watch the entire meeting, but we just got the link today, and I've been working all day. But there was substantial discussion around this. And, you know, one of the areas that we have all committed to is stronger governance. And I think it is, behooves us to listen to what the advisory committee suggested and recommended, which was pretty adamantly against salaries. Especially since last year, the funds were not utilized for street repair. And so I would just say that I would not support using Measure G funds for salaries. I would take a look at ARPA. I still think that what I mentioned before, my stance hasn't really changed around having a deputy community services director. You know, we haven't even broken ground on the rack yet, and this is the big plan for this position. I'm not saying that we don't need it. I read the memo that was sent to all of us. But I am saying that I don't think that that position is needed more than the economic development manager position right now. And I also think it's important, because I've seen kind of misrepresentations in various locations. The city did have an economic development individual, and it was part of the community. I believe it was the planning or community services, and city manager can correct me, but it was part of the title. So at the time, there was one, but I think it was just too much for one position. And when that individual left, that title changed from my recollection to what we have now, which is the community services director. And so this council has actually really pushed to try to get an economic development manager, which is why it's on this budget. And I think the entire council has been supportive of this position. And I would say if there's a position that had to be switched out, I would look at the deputy community services director position. I would also like to really understand where the, you know, this is $194,000 position, and it is not a director level position. I mean, it's a deputy director, but it's not the head of a department. And I am curious to know if that's the going salaries for like cities, you know, to oversee the programs that we don't have yet, that we will have at some point. Because it does seem a little high. And the other ones, as I mentioned before, I had hoped my position would change around this, but the assistant positions, I think
I'm sorry, Councilmember Mason? I was hoping that we can go on to Measure G with the four positions.
Yeah, they're connected, because if we, the funds will be available if we switch out some of the, some of the ARPA, some of the ARPA positions. But, you know, I had hoped that we'd hear maybe that there had been a little bit of pivoting or some outside-the-box thinking. We still have a department that has one director, two deputy directors, and three assistants. And what Mayor Medina said is right. We need a police, right? We need a firefighter, we need a fire inspector. And I'm a little just kind of concerned on what this signifies as far as, you know, what we're prioritizing. Can we have them all? If we can have them all, that would be wonderful. But we have a lot of needs, and I really feel that this year, our vote around how we spend the Measure G funds is critical, especially given the results we just received from the stormwater. So I also, oh, I'll save my other comment for later. Thank you.
Thanks. So what I'm hearing from my colleagues, and please correct me, on the four positions, police officer, firefighter, fire inspector, economic development manager, not to use Measure G, but the ARPA, is that accurate? I see one thumbs up, two thumbs up, a nod, three thumbs up, and a nod. And so there's a 5-0 that we all concur on. It's not a vote, but just the consensus that it's 5-0, and I appreciate that. I think those are important, and we've talked about them. So thank you. The city manager, there was also the $600,000 to contribute to public safety slash park maintenance, which I think you went to Measure G, they were not in support of that. That is something you're still bringing forward to us, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, it is. And let me just get to that slide. I believe I'm sharing my screen right now.
You are.
Yes. And so that was $600,000 to support the baseline general fund budget. And so the city council did articulate that they would like to see those funds allocated to specific services that align to the intent of Measure G, should they support that. And we did provide those sample allocations, which, I mean, baseline budget, not enhancements or restoring positions, have were reduced to baseline police officers, to baseline firefighters, for a total of 600,000, or getting to 600,000 in another way. But one police officer, two firefighters, one park maintenance worker, and $50,000 of park maintenance operating supplies, again, all baseline. But just important to note that in the current proposed budget, due to COVID-19 and the immediacy of the revenue reductions from COVID-19, the city, the committee supported and the council approved 2 million. And we have not been able to erase or essentially make back that full 2 million dollars in the base revenues, but we have been able to reduce that amount by 1.4 million, and so reducing that to 600,000. Again, what the committee felt is that utilize other sources as much as possible. And there was a mention of ARPA. I would say to the council, then went the decision to utilize ARPA for the $1 million of the storm water deficit and the four positions, that you don't have 2 million left in, I'm sorry, 600,000 left in ARPA to pull all of this from ARPA with the other enhancement requests, should you approve those. And so you could potentially do 300,000, which would be essentially the remaining ARPA funds, and maybe 300,000 from ARPA, 300,000 from Measure G, would be a potential way to reduce the amount from Measure G, but utilize ARPA. And so I would proffer that as an alternative to what's in the proposed budget.
Okay, yeah, that was, the four positions were 517,000. So you've heard the city manager with a couple of options. Thoughts, colleagues? Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. And the slide that City Manager Grogan showed, that was, that was a lot of work to get it from 2 million down to 600,000. I guess this is where it's going to get really interesting. So the ARPA funding is available, but only 300,000 of Measure, I'm sorry, only 300,000 currently is available. So I'm now using the spreadsheet that staff sent to us today that shows the Measure G funding in the middle part of the page. Is that available, City Manager Grogan? It kind of makes it a little easier to kind of bounce around if we could put that up, if available. And my question comes down to this, then. If we don't have enough ARPA funding to do everything, then I'm looking at what we could remove out of the ARPA funding table. And it looks like that would be 300,000. And I'm not convinced, I do appreciate the deputy community services director write-up, but that's 194,000 that I can't support at this time. So I would need to come up, or the council would, could get my support if we were able to find 106,000.
Through the mayor, can I just make one clarifying point?
Yes, please.
So if I can go to that table, because it's important to note that the funding for the deputy director position that was included in the proposed budget, there are some offsets. The 194 was a fully loaded cost. Only 91,000 is in the proposed budget for the current year. And so it's not the full 194. Just wanted to make that clarification.
That's appreciated. And City Manager Grogan, do you have this position request? Or is that the best table to use that you're using there? So that it's, we could all follow as I think we're going to be bouncing back and forth?
Yeah, I think this table would be the best, because it has the proposed allocations and the ARPA funding. What's not here right now are the four positions that council is moving from Measure G to ARPA. But if we're talking about the proposed ARPA funding, I think this is the best table to talk from.
Okay. That'll conclude my comments here now, as we wait to hear from our other colleagues. Thank you.
And again, as we hear next from Councilmember Salazar, you know, the city manager gave an option of using the remainder of the ARPA 300,000 to help offset the 600 to 300, so maybe you can also articulate whether you're okay with that. Councilmember Salazar?
I was going to say that I really get nervous when we start making large-scale decisions from the dais without having a real opportunity to digest all of this. Councilmember Mason brought up some good questions about which positions really are priorities and which ones align with our strategic goals. And staff has provided us with an option to approve of the CIP and continue this discussion. And given the results that we saw earlier this afternoon from the stormwater ballot, and given those requirements, I would really like to come back and see all of the enhancements fully reflecting all of those commitments, including an ongoing support for stormwater, now that it won't be funded through property tax. I want to see all of those things sort of spelled out the way we've seen the migration from Measure G and ARPA to general fund. I want to see how that is going to play in, because we have to do something with that. And it's not a one-time million-dollar commitment. It's an ongoing, at least million-dollar commitment going forward for stormwater. And I think that's a reality that we didn't have when we started these discussions, but it's definitely a reality now. So I'd like to see how all of these changes, including input from the Measure G committee, the new liability we have from stormwater, all of those things play together over the next several years, not just for the current budget.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Hamilton?
So I actually, I agree with Councilmember Salazar. It would be good to be able to see all the changes that we've discussed and be able to look at it in an organized way. Because, you know, we're moving around a lot of money here. And really, as Councilmember Salazar said, understanding how we're going to continue to fund the stormwater problem is important. I don't know how far we can push it off, because we need to approve a budget though. And, you know, and for the stormwater, we're going to need to do a, we had said in the previous session tonight that we were going to organize a study session for that. Regarding the deputy community development director position, I'm in agreement with the vice mayor and Councilmember Mason, that that's not something that I think we should fund in this year, just given all of our other challenges. I definitely would be supportive of looking at it for the next fiscal year, but for this year, I wouldn't be supportive of that. The, and then I do have a question about, and we haven't got to this topic yet. If we need to push this topic off a little bit, but it's still part of the Measure G. The Oversight Committee did not recommend the 300,000 for the downtown streetscape plan. But I didn't hear, it was very, very clear, the reasoning for not funding the other items. But I didn't hear the reasoning for that one. And I just want to like to understand. And I didn't get a chance to watch the recording either today, so I was wondering.
And good point. Councilor, I can tell you what I've heard, but I'd rather hear it from our city manager, who was present and interacting with the committee. City manager?
Absolutely. Councilmember Hamilton, the, there were two really articulated reasons from the committee for not supporting that item. One was, it was, appeared to be 300,000, in their words, $300,000 to work toward implementing the downtown streetscape plan, which is a $10 million plan, without knowing exactly when we would have the funds to implement portions of that plan. We did articulate that it was to develop a block-by-block schematic of installation of trees, as well as other landscapes, but without a understanding on exactly when and how that would be funded. and how that would be funded, they were not supportive of using Measure G funds, thinking that it would be studied for the sake of study. From a staff perspective, I know that we've had significant conversations with the council, and it was one of the city council's strategic initiatives to do what we can to move forward with some improvements to downtown. And starting with that plan was the recommended next appropriate step for staff. In addition, what the committee mentioned was, or I wouldn't say that this came from the entire committee, but there were questions raised about what contributions would there be from downtown, from businesses downtown, to help pay for portions of the streetscape plan? Would the city, or is the city considering a T-bid, a, or a, a business improvement district, or other, other funding mechanisms? And so we didn't really have the time to discuss all of those. With, with regard to another question that was raised by, I think, council member Hamilton, council member Salazar, I do want to pull up one slide because we did prepare some information for the city council. And so this slide right here does present the decisions that you've made and actually allows you to understand what the full costs are. And so with the proposed ARPA funding, adding in those four positions, we did do that work to say, one of the decisions for the city council would be to add in those four positions. This is the dollar amount on that four-year ramp down of twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five percent. And so of the ten million dollars, including those four positions, the amount is eight point eight million. And so there was one point three million left to fund the stormwater deficit, which the city council in the prior meeting decided to do. So we didn't adjust this between the five-thirty meeting and the seven-thirty meeting, but the, the math has been done for you. And so you, you know that should you fund that one million from, from stormwater, you're looking at a residual amount of ARPA of three hundred and ninety-four thousand. And so that's why I did say that you could potentially pull three hundred from ARPA and another three hundred from Measure G to make that six hundred allocation that was originally going to come from, off from Measure G. So I just wanted to point that out, that, that those numbers have been projected and done for you tonight.
Okay, thank you. So going back to the streetscape one, just, just, the, I thank you for providing those, that, 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 the details of their discussion. I've been very, very clear, my position on this since, since joining the council, that, that we need to make, start making improvements downtown and not wait for, wait for full funding because, and I, I sound like a broken record, but waiting for money to fix downtown has been the policy here for decades. And we need to show our, we need to show our residents and our merchants that we are committed to making changes downtown. So while I appreciate the oversight committee's hard work, I disagree with their recommendation on that line item, and I think that three hundred thousand should come from Measure G. On the, regarding the other positions, the six hundred thousand, the, I, I, I could be talked into splitting, splitting it three hundred each between ARPA and Measure G. The, while I completely understand the oversight committee's reluctance to use Measure G for salaries, and I, you know, in a perfect world, I absolutely share that, that, that policy myself. The, the failure of the stormwater really, you know, changes the game for us here. And I don't think that we, you know, I, I do think that we need to end the year with the, the one point five in general fund reserve, as per the recommendation. And, but we shouldn't be pulling that from the general fund, and I think I would be supportive of, of having that six hundred thousand be, be half funded by Measure G and half funded by ARPA.
There, again, we're still on the six hundred thousand that was put forward. You've heard council member Hamilton, the three hundred and three hundred. He also made a comment on the downtown, but on the six hundred specifically, splitting that three hundred and three hundred, based on council comments as well, may, may I say, it sounds like on the ninety-one thousand plus, let's just round it down, right? Ninety-one thousand for the deputy community services director, and if that's not going to be utilized, that could also be put in to defray even more, right? So it doesn't have to be three hundred and three hundred, it can be two hundred and change and, and, and so anyway, just because I've already heard, heard that articulated. So other thoughts from my colleagues on the six hundred thousand or Measure G items? Council member Mason?
I'd just say, I, for me, I'd like to, I, I do agree with council member Salazar that I would support continuing the item because I would like to hear what the Measure G committee said specifically around the fund, these funds, the six hundred thousand. And then I would just comment that I did listen to the three hundred thousand. I do think we should try to take that out of our general fund. I don't believe that that was the spirit, at least at this time, of Measure G. And again, given that funds were not spent last year on street repair, I really think that needs to be our focus this year. I think our residents want to see the change, and I feel like there's a, a way that we can find those funds in the general fund and still meet the, meet our, our commitment to both downtown and to Measure G and the street repair.
Yeah, how did you know? Thank you. Yeah, it seems like having staff do a little more calculation would be fine. I, I, I think I'm prepared to, to, to go forward with a few things here. But since, well, let me state the obvious, I, I'm in support of, of doing something downtown. I, I think it's very, very clear that our community does support that. San Bruno Community Foundation did have a survey, and downtown was like one of the, if not the, the first or second, I can't recall where it was, but we, we, our community wants a nicer downtown, and we need to, we need to plan, and this is exactly what we talked about, and maybe the oversight committee wasn't aware of the depth of the conversations that we had over it. So going back and, and having another talk about it, we do have to approve a budget. I'm open to hearing how our city manager proposes to go forward with this. However, I am, I'm also open to spending the money with the Measure G money for, for that piece. Again, looking at ARPA first, we haven't gone through all of the positions yet, Mr. Mayor. I asked staff a few questions about a number of the items. The public work, public works and parks maintenance workers. I'm in support of the idea of bringing people back in order to do more, but I'm interested in knowing specifically what are, what more is going to get done. I also brought up my concern about the medians, and, and it is my understanding that these additional workers have so much to do that they probably would, will not get to maintain the medians, but that's something that I, I think is also important. So how about I, how about I stop now? I do have some questions in general about all of this basis of this budget doesn't include any increased costs in pensions, doesn't include any increased cost in healthcare coverage. It's, the question is, it's currently set at zero, but we know it's going to go up. Do we have an estimate of what it's going to go up? The worst thing that a council can do is bring on new staff and then not be able to pay for it, and then you're going to have to lay people off. Well, we, we have a contract currently that we're not allowed to lay people off. So we need to make sure that, I believe this council should be fully aware of all those things as best as we can, and, and we're pressed against time now. So I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing how our city manager proposes to, to move forward. Thank you.
So that, let's start to leave the Measure G per se. I think we've articulated on the four positions. The last one was six hundred thousand. There is still three hundred from, oh, there still is three hundred, like Tom had said to split it, but also there was a concern on the three hundred for downtown, whether that should come out from G or not. Also, we have other positions that depending if they're funded or not, that may add, doesn't have to be equal and equal. But let's, let's start to open the dialogue since there's much more to the budget as well, as the vice mayor said. And city manager, if you could direct us to what would be best, so we could start, you know, taking this in?
Mr. Mayor, one, one quick clarification, please?
Yep.
The, the ARPA money available is three hundred and ninety-four thousand, based on the slide that city manager provided, so.
That is true, I'm sorry, through the mayor, that is true.
Yes, please.
And I think I've heard a majority of the city council say that they are not in favor of funding the deputy director position at that time, and so we can add another ninety-one thousand to that available number. And so we, we'll give you the total on that in just one second. In response to council member Medina's comments, I, I'd like to sort of have those discussions, and I know staff is, is here ready to provide answers. It is my recommendation that if possible, we would end tonight with a adopted operating and, and operating and capital budget. I would say that with regard to the allocations from Measure G for the downtown streetscape program, we did commit to return to the Measure G committee and have additional discussions. And so the, the city council could really make a decision tonight to fund that from, as we talked about, the general fund capital reserve, or you could direct staff to just continue to have additional conversations with the committee, and you can make that decision later. In addition, I want to say just overall that we won't be able to solve the stormwater challenge before we have to adopt a budget. And so I, I know that we have to have those discussions, and we are certainly committed to having them, but we're, we're not going to be able to identify a path forward before we have to adopt a, a budget by July one. And so if we can address some of the other questions, maybe we can get there. I do want to share a screen really quick because council member Medina mentioned, do we know what the additional pension and healthcare costs, is that factored in the budget? So the answer to that is absolutely, I guess, sort of in the interest of time, where you were asking the question, but council member Medina, I did pull up our PowerPoint slide from June first, that had a total of a hundred and fifty-nine slides. A few of the slides we did go through were the additional pension costs that are included in the proposed budget. And so there is, yes, included an increase of forty-three thousand in additional pension costs. There is an additional one point one million of the unfunded actuarial liability. And with regard to health costs, we did include, based on knowing what the rates will be for the coming fiscal year, projecting out what the rates will be for the, we know what the rates will be definitely for the last six months of the calendar year, which are the first six months of the fiscal year. With regard to the second six months of the fiscal year, we always make projections. And so we have projected an increased cost of our health and insurance costs of three hundred and seventy thousand as included in the budget. And all of our projections go, that go forward include factors for increased, increased pension costs, because we know that based on this table in our actuarial projections, as well as assumptions for increased in healthcare costs. So I, I would just say that yes, those costs were factored in, included in the proposed budget and included in all of the projections. With regard to the question on what additional work will be done with the restoration of the parks maintenance worker positions, we do have director Anne Matola that is ready to provide council with an answer to that question. So through the mayor, I'll direct it to director Matola for that.
Please.
Good evening, council members. Anne Matola, community services director. So what we didn't have time to do since the last time we met, and the, and council member, vice mayor Medina asked about kind of a study on this, we didn't do, we certainly didn't have the time in two weeks to do a study. But what we do know in the field, I think, I spoke a little bit about how we tend to be always running behind, and I think this is no secret, this is something which council has reacted to, so why add another person if we know we're not going to catch up on, like seeing some real marked improvement? And it always comes to the median strips. So what I will say is that when you have another person added to the career, what it does is kind of those, those perpunctury tasks that they do every day in every one of the parks, they go quicker. So forty staff hours would probably create another forty hours of a senior, of one of our senior staff, that can hit some of the more technical aspects which always tend to get pushed behind. So what are some of those things? If you go into the park, you'll see some of our infrastructure pieces, which may be in disrepair, a lot of leechers and benches, so we could probably be more on top of that. Irrigation, particularly during the, the sports season, when the fields are in high use, we want to be immediately responsive to irrigation. And a lot of times when we take our crews off or doing that regular daily maintenance, we get behind on that because we want to make sure our users are served. So I can't give you a precise measurement, but just by the, the pace of the work that currently our park staff is experiencing right now, it would really alleviate and give us the ability to be a little bit more responsive, a little bit more, I wouldn't say proactive, but certainly responsive as those things come up for our users. And the other thing I'll say is while we are not like, we are not like public safety, right? If we're, if we're, if one of our people are, are on sick and vacation, it's not a, it's not a safety issue for the, for the community. We don't have constant staffing requirements or anything of that nature, but what it does do is it makes it particularly this time of year, as we're seeing as people do put time in for vacations, whatnot, we're, again, we really are stretched thin, and just having that one more person to rotate in should just help us, keep us from our parks falling into disrepair. And so I think that's really an important part of this, this ask and this request. I think what the city is seeing, certain things are kind of falling in disrepair. So we're going to keep falling a little bit behind until we staff up. And I think part of what we do need to do is to do some type of an evaluation, you know, a, a study similar to, to what many communities do to make sure the park staffing is adequate for the type of space that we maintain. Parks are different than open space, are different than median strips, different than fields, and there are all different standards for care for those different types of aspects. So we can, we can do that for you, but the immediate problem of us falling is that we are kind of falling behind, and we're hoping to fall less behind. So hopefully that helps a little bit explain the environment that we're working in and how the position will help.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Yeah, and before I get too far ahead of myself here, thank you, city manager Grogan, for the slides that showed those increases, that was helpful. It clearly slipped my mind, but thank you for, for providing those. So I understand how more bodies help out. I didn't have much working experience in the parks, being that I was in public work, so has, has apparently the usage of summertime help? Can you, can you talk a little bit about that and how that could possibly also be used to allow some additional rotating in to cover, cover some of the, the absences that you were talking about? Is, is it that we didn't do as much summertime help due to COVID, or? What is the current, what is the current policy?
So seasonally, we do, and I think you are referring So seasonally, we do, and I think you are referring to the seasonal help that we hire in during the P Q season, so we do hire additional staff. I can tell you hiring part-time staff has been extremely challenging. We have, we've had a recruitment open for probably two months. I think we are just close to hiring our second person to help because of pers rules that are limited on the hours that they can work weekly, so it does take several of them to kind of rotate on a weekly basis. So we can use them. They are actually, just right now in this environment, for some reason, they were very challenging to recruit. But we are, we are actually looking at that resource as well to try to resolve this problem.
That's, that's definitely helpful, and it's understandable that the the labor market right now is really stressed. In in today's budget, on page B four, there's, there's, there's a small item about the the need for for overtime. Overtime is something that's typically rarely used, and and do we have an overtime policy? I can only base my experience when I was in public works, and we rarely ever had overtime unless it was paid for by a project. I was wondering if you can kind of comment on the usage of overtime?
So there's always.
And the need for it.
There's always a baseline amount of overtime for a couple of reasons. One of them has to do with the on-call of our trade team. So when there were certain wins, we have to put people on standby. Sometimes they're called in, sometimes not, but that's, that will incur overtime. So that takes a chunk of it. We added, what we did is we intentionally added some overtime in there to, we, we took a look at certain programs, certain aspects of parks that need to be rehabilitated. There are a couple of projects which aren't capital projects, but which a crew of staff could probably take care of, and one of them is a college dry median strip project. And so we wanted to put some overtime in there because this is not the normal, if you're looking at the rotation that we're trying not to get behind on, we looked at things that were outside of that and valued what the overtime would be, and we're to address staff. And then also what happens is during, so in the summer, when we do hire our seasonal staff, they typically will fortify and take on the weekend shifts, and we kind of alternate shifts. During the off-season, we still have to have staff come in and check the facilities on the weekends, and they usually come in, it could be two to three hours a day, no more than that, and so that's also part of the overtime budget, and that's been there consistently.
Final question, and maybe this is probably going to be streets is, so I'll hold off on that. So my parks questions are finished.
Okay. Maybe it is good if we take it by department. I'm just trying to figure a way so we kind of keep succinct going through. Since we have the director on screen and what have you, is there anything within recreation, parks, senior services, library? Other than what the vice mayor has asked? Okay. Other questions from my colleagues on the, on the budget? Councilmember Salazar, please.
Not a question per se, Mr. Mayor, but you know, I, I understand the city manager and his team's desire to approve a budget, and I agree, I share that that interest in doing that. And one, one path forward I would propose is that if there are still some questions on the improvements and how some of those things would be funded, I would be in favor of approving the budget without the enhancements and the C I P, so that we could move forward, have that budget approved, and then come back to look at the enhancements at a subsequent meeting where we could perhaps spend more time on some of the detailed things. I, I still have, I think I said it this before, that I have a lot of faith in the city manager and his team in terms of how they want to allocate the resources and where they want to prioritize things. So I, I'm less concerned about getting into the weeds on those things as I am about how we're going to pay for these things and how they look over the next several years. I, I really like what, what staff and the city manager did in presenting us that, that forecast where we see the, how the funds transition from one to the other. And I, I really would like to see these other priorities included in that, in that forecast, so that I truly understand where we make a transition from one-time funds and how we start burdening the general fund with those same commitments over time and how it all balances out, because right now I'm very, very nervous about how those things look over the long run.
Councilmember, just so I'm clear, because I think you said not the capital, but you're saying yes on the capital. Allow that to go forward. No on the enhancements.
No enhancements.
The, the general day-to-day operations, yes, your suggestions. When it comes to the monies that would be used from the federal government from COVID, are you saying for those to go forward at the five hundred seventeen thousand?
And I would definitely be in favor of using the recovery money for the backfill positions, not the enhancements at this time, but definitely for the backfill.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you for allowing me to get clarification. If I'm doing my math on that six hundred K, which that's not what we're talking about right now, I think we'd be about needing another one hundred and fourteen, one hundred and fifteen thousand in order to get to the six hundred. The city manager?
Yes, if you will, we, we have prepared a new slide that will articulate where we are, should the city council decide not to fund the deputy director position. And it, I just want to walk the, the city council through it really quickly, and so it provides, I think, clarity to exactly what you were saying, Mayor Medina. So what we've done for this summary is that we have taken out that deputy director position that was here, and not just the proposed year, which is what the figures we were calculating were based on, but all of the subsequent years. And so what that does is that it reduces the total position funding number, and it provides enough funds to cover that entire transfer to the, from the general fund, because again, we're not funding that deputy director position in the out years. And so with the one twelve from in-business grants, the seven fifty in the C I P budget, funding the million in stormwater, transferring in six million in measure G, and the position funding as proposed, adding in the four positions from measure G, it provides a total usage of ten point zero four six million. And so I just wanted to provide that information to, to the city council. We were able to update this slide based on the information and the decisions that you have made tonight. I wanted to show you that you do have the ability to transfer in to the general fund six hundred thousand. And again, we would tie those to baseline general fund expenditures.
Thank you very much for quickly, for you and staff doing that slide. Appreciate that. Does, do, Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you, sir. So that, that is, that is an interesting approach, but I believe staff had made a pretty compelling reason to fund that position at some point, and with the rec center coming online within that timeframe, we're going to have to pay for it somehow in, in some of those outlying years. So again, we may solve the problem today, but we're creating another problem for tomorrow and, and so on. And that's, that's where, where I get stuck on this, is that we can't make those commitments without, without thinking about what's going to happen, because we know we're going to need that position. So yes, we, we can defer it, but that, that bottom line number today is not what we'll be facing when we do this again next year.
You're muted, Mr. Mayor, if you're trying to speak.
Was, I was listening to myself.
That's two times.
Councilmember Mason, sorry.
Yeah, I think I would, I would just suggest that the conversation around the position, not, you know, what, however we move forward tonight, but that it not end tonight, that we actually continue to communicate with the city manager on a path forward, because I think we'll agree that a position, whether it be that position or something similar, that's going to be handling the programs is needed. I, I did want to ask, the slide that was just shown a moment ago, it had the other three positions on the bottom, the police officer, firefighter, and fire inspector. Are those, I just wanted to make sure, those also would, under that slide, they would not be measure G funds? Or where, where would they come from? I guess this is really the question.
They would, they would come from ARPA, the ARPA funds, so they are included in the ARPA positions. So it includes the four positions that were proposed to be funded by measure G, the Economic Development Manager, Police Officer, Firefighter, and Fire Inspector. And so that, the cost for those are included in this line item that you see here.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that's great, quick work there, City Manager Grogan, but clearly at some point, the Deputy Community Services Director is going to be needed to step in there. So I know we only approve one-year budgets. We're going to have difficulty, it seems like, quite often in, in, in dealing with budgets, but I'll leave it at that, and I, I'm sure City Manager Grogan is going to be able to do something clever with, with those projections.
Okay, so, so far, there has been a suggestion that's brought forward, which is to approve the capital, to approve the day-to-day operating budget, to approve all funding from the A R P A funds. This is a suggestion from Councilmember Salazar. On the six hundred thousand, I think Councilmember Salazar brought up, like, okay, but that doesn't take care of tomorrow, right? Getting the six hundred out of the transfer, but staff's doing the math. So his suggestion also was to bring back the enhancement positions for more detail and further discussion. What is the desire of colleagues or other suggestions?
I can get a second. I will make a motion to move my proposal forward and just fund the baseline budget with the C I P and the use of the ARPA funds.
Was there a second to that?
I'm sorry.
Is there a second to, is there a second to the motion? I'll second it.
Close. But I just wanted to, okay.
And, but for clarification to the motion maker, is that also to bring back, it was, it was also to bring back the, the enhancement positions, right?
Correct, that is correct.
All right, is there any discussion on that or an amendment to the, to the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr., Vice Mayor?
I'd be interested in hearing where our city manager could respond to like how of going forward in this direction.
Sure, so through the mayor.
Please.
I want to clarify the, the city council's intent, because we do need to approve a budget before July one. A continuing resolution does continue to fund the government, but it does not include the enhancements, nor other baseline items that were not in the prior year's budget. One option, if the city council did land with not acting tonight, would be to schedule a meeting prior to July one, and so there is a Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, or any other day that the city council could make to have additional discussions on the budget. Another option would be to simply approve the budget as proposed by Councilmember Salazar, but not have those discussions prior to July one. And if the council would like to discuss that, I, I do think it's worth having significant conversations around that, and I do see challenges with that, given positions that we are anticipating hiring, and in particular, with regard to our public safety positions, where people are, are set to go to the academy, or we have lateral applicants that are already sort of in the process waiting on if this is approved. You know, if council says don't hire them, we won't hire them. But if we were sort of inclined to hire them, it would be nice not to lose candidates that are, that we know have already approached and have, have, have been in the process. You know, it is my recommendation that if the city council can adopt a budget tonight, we would adopt a budget and, of course, continue to have conversations around long-term financial challenges that certainly are not going away. A hundred and ten percent recognize, and thank the city council for articulating, that some level of additional deputy or other positional support is needed in the Community Services Department. Absolutely, if we were, if we are not approving that position in this current budget year, we would certainly continue to look for permanent funding for that position, and knowing that it would not be ARPA, but we would need to add a later day, add a later date identified permanent ongoing fund.
Just for, for clarification and, and council member, unless I misunderstood and, and city manager, maybe I'm misunderstanding, I think the council member had said to approve the C I P, to approve the day-to-day operational budget, to approve anything from the A R P A, which I believe is the public safety personnel, so that would take care of that. So I, I see that goes forward, that's a done deal. What would, only thing would be coming back is the enhancements of positions that are outside of that. And correct me, Councilmember Salazar.
No, that's.
There are no enhancements outside of the A R P A positions. And so let me sort of go back.
Thank you, thank you.
Because what I, what I, what I heard you articulate, but I'm sorry, I didn't think was the point, was to approve these positions and the capital budget and the other operating budget. That's what I heard articulated, and, and I, I think that would be fine, because we're approving and adopting budgets. But what I thought I heard Councilmember Salazar articulating was not to approve the, approve the enhancements, which would be these positions. It's also worth noting that these, when we say enhancements, we are, while we've been talking around the ARPA enhancements, there are other enhancement positions that are not ARPA enhancements. Some are general fund, and some are actually funded by other revenue sources. For example, the, the contract officers from YouTube are part of the enhancement package, but there, there's not a funding request tied to those, and they don't show up in this portrait because they are not funded by ARPA.
First the Vice Mayor, then Councilmember Salazar.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This is still on the question?
I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Councilman, Councilman Salazar go ahead and go forward, just stating that I'm pretty close, and I think being the hour, it's nine forty-one, it's not that late, and we've worked way harder on these budgets, that I don't have much objections to anything else. So I think we're really close, but I'll be quiet.
I mean, if, if the majority of the council wants to move forward and approve this, I'll withdraw my, my, my motion, and whoever wants to make it a, a different motion can definitely go forward. I, I still do not think that what we've been presented tonight adequately represents what we, what we came into this expecting. There's still a lot of questions in my mind. I've heard other council members state questions about where the priorities should be. I saw a slide in there somewhere that said that there were some public safety positions that were just being backfilled, that they were not enhancements. So there's my confusion around what, what is an enhancement, what is not an enhancement, what's new, what's not new, what, what was there before and just frozen versus, you know. So I still have a lot of questions, and so I am not comfortable approving it, but if the majority wants to move forward, then I withdraw my motion.
Councilmember, Councilmember Hamilton, you haven't had an opportunity?
So I, I agree that.
So I, I agree that, I think we are close. And I don't know how much value we would get by pushing it off for another week. The, if it makes it easier, you know, try to get one of, one of the, one of the other questions off of the table. Earlier I had brought up the streetscape plan and now, and the city manager suggested that we fund that, that we, that in the adopted budget, we, we fund that through the general fund, capital reserve and one-time initiatives fund. But that there would be additional discussions with the measured G oversight committee and possibly be able to get it back on there. And I would be fine with that. If that, if that helps.
That's how I understood it too, Councilmember Hamilton, that they didn't see the exact plan. And so had that, had that opportunity, that may have changed their, their view. And so I, I'm concur, I would concur with what you just said. Vice Mayor Medina.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, that was a previous hand up. I didn't lower it, so I'm pretty good.
I'm sorry.
And, but, but since you did call on me, I mean, a lot of the enhancements are in IT, you know, replacing switches and all these things that we know need to be done. I'm looking at page B5. Knit impact of the fund, 105,000 more or less. And we need all those and I have no objection to any of those. But let's see how we can get around a consensus, that would be pretty nice.
Well, no, I don't think anybody's too far off. I think where Councilmember Salazar, and I, and I get it, it's always great to get a budget done. There's nothing wrong with that. And I'm saying we're, we are almost there. It's about long-term, it's about looking down that. It's okay, but we're not going to do it this time, but then we take it out. So there's just a lot of variables. And I think we're, you know, this million dollars that we had to backfill, these are one-time monies. They're eventually going to be gone. What's the long-term plan? Yes, staff can come back. And I think that's where the council member was having that concern is, and looking at it holistically globally, really in the big, big term. Councilmember Mason.
Sorry, so I think that I agree actually with everybody, everything everybody has said. There was a new hire report and vacancy list sent to us in response to a question raised in our last meeting. If that helps at all with some, with one of the questions. I do think that the question around, you know, when I look at this list, I know that all these departments need these positions. And I feel comfortable knowing that the measure G funds have been moved under ARPA. And thank you, City Manager, I don't think that was a surprise. This has been discussed before as a concern and raised by the committee. But I do think what would be interesting to know, I don't have to know it tonight, but is when you mentioned that there are people that are maybe moving laterally within the different departments, does that mean that that's freeing up funds from the position that they need to be moving out of? And so I am just trying to figure out how we're going to be able, because what I don't want is to hire a bunch of people just to not be able to keep them in a year. But I know, I think two, at least two positions, I believe, are, are positions within the agency with existing employees. And so I'm not sure how many, how many of those there may be. I'm not sure what the process is. And again, I'm not sure that we even need to get into that level of detail tonight. I am comfortable with the move from the measure G committee to the, I mean, measure G to ARPA. And I think the question I have remaining is around that $300,000 and whether there is, do we need consensus on that to move that from measure G to the, come from the general fund?
Well, I'm going to have the city manager respond. And I know Councilmember Hamilton, which I concurred with on how he stated, which is it was there, but to go back to measure G, which the city manager had stated, because they did not have that opportunity. Their concern was, what's the plan? You're asking for money, but what's the plan? We don't write a check without a plan. That's, that's how my understanding.
Right, and I'm asking, and I think I'm asking for something different, which is can we go ahead and take it out of the general fund? Because let's be honest, the downtown streetscape plan is $20 million. So that conversation can still go back to the committee. And it was ranked number one in the last meeting that I attended with the San Bruno Foundation. So who knows that there's going to be money invested as well from the foundation. But I do think for purposes of moving this forward, that would be a helpful answer if possible.
City Manager.
Sure, I think I can address both of those. Councilmember Mason, with regard to my statement about a lateral hire, I understand your articulation. The way you articulated it, it was a lateral hire going from one, one department of the city to another department of the city. I'm sorry, that's not how I, how I meant it. How I meant it is, we are in the process of actually hiring lateral police officers. And so it's a, not that we're putting someone new through the academy, but someone transferring lateral from another department. And those are, for our police officers, we have an open and continuous recruitment, given the turnover and periodic vacancies. So when you get a lateral, it's oftentimes you want to be able to have that position to say yes, or else they'll go to another agency. And that's what I meant with regard to that. With regard to your other questions, I do want to bring up a slide. And let's just begin this really quickly slideshow from the beginning. And so with regard to the decisions we were talking about, it was really the stormwater deficit, the four positions that were proposed to be funded by measure G, the 600,000 transfer and the 300,000. And I think we've almost addressed all of those. And so let's go through this. What I asked staff to do and the magic of them, they were able to do it. Because Councilmember Salazar asked which of these positions are restorations and which of these are new. And so we were able to highlight in, you know, blue, the positions that are new. And so that is the, and they were, many of them were asterisks already. So that is the IT associate, we talked about that. That is a new IT associate to support our police and fire infrastructure. Will be shared jointly. The long-range advanced senior planner, as the city council knows, we do not have a long-range advanced senior planner. And so there's been many of efforts to have that position so that our plans and our advanced planning work can actually occur and we're not solely relying on updating plans by contractors. There's a senior planner, 75% will be funded by developer reimbursements, 25% by the city. The economic development manager, that we of course talked a lot about. And then the fire inspector, which is that new fire inspector to help run the city's citywide wildfire mitigation and prevention plan. And everything that we've talked about with that. It's the Crestmore Canyon work, it's the, it's the, the citywide work addressing our areas that we, city property that we need to do fire mitigation and landscape clearing, as well as working with other agencies and caltrans, for example, like we recently did on the, on the project to clear significant eucalyptus trees along 2A. So those are the five that are new. The others are all restorations. All restorations from positions that were eliminated from the budget due to COVID-19. And the proposal is to use the federal recovery act funds, the rescue act funds, as they were intended to help cities like ours gradually recover from COVID-19. And the financial projections that we have is building in the 25% of the cost to the general fund. So by 25, 26, the general fund is fully supporting those costs. And so this is again, that summary sheet of ARPA with the decisions that council has made tonight, which is utilizing 1 million to cover the stormwater deficit. Trans, you haven't made the decision, but we've talked about utilizing the transfer into the general fund that will be tied to specific positions of 600,000. And then those position requests that we just saw, again, the longer trajectory of these using just under 10 billion, leaving an allocated ARPA balance of 193,000. Lastly, there was the item of, well, where and or how do we fund the 300,000 for the downtown streetscape? We proposed measure G. We know that the committee did not support that. Council has talked about going back and further articulating that when we go back to measure G about the rationales behind that recommendation. But you've also talked about in order for this work to proceed forward as it is a strategic initiative, utilizing other funds that we, we have and what staff recommended or offered as an alternative, is using 300,000 in our general fund capital reserve and one-time initiatives fund that has a net balance of $5 million when we include the funding for the RAC. And so should council want to adopt a budget with these changes as well as identifying one of these two sources? I think that would comprise the, the decisions that you talked about or the items that you talked about that allow council to adopt a budget tonight, should you so desire.
Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, you used the term that I'm not very familiar with. Can you go back to what, what exactly does restoration mean?
Absolutely. So restoration means positions that were funded or, and were, they were funded positions and they were frozen during the, at the beginning of the last budget cycle when we needed to cut 8.2 million dollars from the budget. And so these positions were funded positions.
If I, so if I remember correctly though, for example, police officer is a position that has been vacant for some time. But, and I'll just get to my point. I want to just be really very transparent that last year they weren't in the budget, right? And without having another graph of, you know, one year, two years, however long they've been vacant, we wouldn't know on the spot. But for purposes of making the decision, these are positions we don't have this year. And when we look at the, you know, let me see what the total projected cost is. Let's say we're looking at the annual totals, that's what we're responsible for a year from now. So whether we, whether the position was vacant last year or the year before that, it just makes me feel like it was not part of the budget. And so we should, what I'm, we should be planning for next year to fund this amount, whether it's a restored position or it's a brand-new position. Regardless, it's, the total amount of money is something we're going to have to fund next year.
That is true, but if I can, let me clarify. By restored, what I mean is the position was funded in the 1920 budget. It was a funded position in the 1920 budget. Now, when we got to the point of we needed to freeze positions, that position may have been vacant, but it was a funded position. I, that's what, that is certainly true for the police officer firefighter and our associate. This is our traffic engineer. Our traffic engineer was a budgeted funded position. That position was the incumbent left to go to another agency. But when we adopted the budget, it was a funded position, but it was vacant. And so we froze it at that time. And so while there was not a person occupying it, it was a funded position. It just so happened that the person left during, during that fiscal year. And so you're absolutely right, you know, should we restore the positions, we would have to fund them in subsequent years. And the proposal is to fund 75 from ARPA, 50, 25 along the next couple of years and have the general fund pick up 25%. And the only caveat, as I look at this list that I, that I want to clarify is the senior building inspector, that should actually be blue here because that, that's an on-demand position. And the executive assistant was a, again, as we talked about, a funded position. It was just funded as a public information officer. But it was a funded position.
That, okay, so the, the public information officer was a funded and approved position by the council last year?
Last year in the 1920, yes. Pre-COVID-19, yes. Fro, frozen, like the police officer, the traffic engineer, the firefighter, the public works maintenance worker. Yes, frozen in the current budget year 2021. And that's what we did, because we were faced with immediate reduction due to COVID-19 and no help from the federal government, we froze vacant positions in order to not lay off employees.
So I'm just going to dig a little bit deeper because I just don't remember that. I don't remember that, that position approved. So when you say it was frozen, did it come to us as a fully budgeted position with the intent to hire last year, in the last budget cycle?
In the 1920 budget cycle, so not the current year, but the prior year. It was a funded position. And as we, we talked about earlier, the PIO position in the city manager's office was a funded position. And I have full authority to hire that position. I did not do that, but it was a funded position. Yes.
So I think, so you're talking about, okay, 19, so I would not know it was in here. But for 20, I do remember this being, you and I speaking about this. Okay, so I, I just want to be, I just want to make sure that, you know, this is, you know, this is a team that, that's, that's been created. And I think as you're building the team, we all have a responsibility to ensure that there's longevity to what we're creating and what we're approving. So if the city manager has confidence that there's going to be funds to continue to pay for these positions after the ARPA money is due, and that's the commitment that's being made now through what we're hearing, I'm comfortable with it because I know, I've seen, I think we all have seen our streets. We've all had complaints from residents about a number of these positions that are needed. But I would just ask that in the future, we have a significant amount of clarity around these positions. I think it's been very difficult to dig and really understand where these positions came from, how they're, how they're being, I guess, how they're being prioritized. And then within the priority categories within the departments is which positions are truly new. And if a position's been vacant for a few years, that really is kind of a new position because we hadn't budgeted it in the past. So I, I just think it's, it would be nicer to have a little more clarity around these positions.
I'm going to have a couple of comments. At first, I don't think it's fair to any city manager to say he, he or she is, can guarantee the future. You know, nobody could have guaranteed that we were going to get a COVID and do what we did. So the city manager and his team at this point are putting together what they believe, based on the economy, based on the rebound, based on how, how the city is doing. When you have a position that's been funded, like the communications person, that has been funded and on the books and there's monies allocated for that. Because it's vacant doesn't make it a new position because we didn't, we didn't get rid of it and bring it back. It just wasn't filled, therefore those monies weren't used. And those monies were used to balance the budget. So it's, it's not new, it's restored, it's, it was defunded, then it's refunded, or however the terms. But I don't know, you know, the city manager and his team brings forward to us their best knowledge and thoughts and profession at this time. But I couldn't put it on his or his team's shoulder to say you've got a guarantee because the future is uncertain. And that's why we have amendments to the budget that come back for us to make adjustments if and when needed. So anyway, Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, sir. I, I agree with you that I realize staff doesn't have a crystal ball. But I, I do feel, again, I wouldn't sound like a broken record. The things we do know about, we, we need to reflect. And I agree with Councilmember Mason that this is not immediately transparent. And in prior budget years, whenever we talk about enhancements, those are additions to our budget. And perhaps 1920 held, it had the positions, but if 2021 didn't, then they were gone. So if we, if we didn't have a placeholder for them, if we didn't account for them and then have a surplus because we didn't have to pay for them, then they're gone. And then they truly are enhancements. So I think that just causes a lot of confusion. And, and you know, I kind of came into this conversation thinking there were some positions that were actually held there and we were just allocating funds because they were, they were still in the budget. Now I'm hearing they got pulled after last year and now they're coming back. So that's different, then they truly. So that's different than they truly are enhancements. And so I think, you know, again, a lot of confusion around that and that's why I'm really not comfortable moving forward with this.
Well, folks, any other thoughts? I mean, I think, like everybody said, we're good on a lot of stuff. I know just I'll put my two cents on the three hundred thousand that would become from reserves. You know, is that the best thing to automatically say we're going to take it out of reserves? We need to keep a balance of reserves. Do we allow the city manager to go back to Measure G when there's more time? And there was a very short window, so I can understand that. I hear what council members are saying as far as the, let's say, definitions. Is it enhancement and is it not? Is it is it restore and how is it quantified? Because obviously, we're all not. So city manager, is there something that would assist us in understanding that with more clarity? Please.
Absolutely. And, you know, I would just say that as council member articulated, Salazar articulated, if they weren't included in the budget, they're enhancements. I agree with that and that's why we proposed them all as enhancements, both the restored positions and the new positions in the proposed budget that you received our enhancement requests. And they're enhancements because they were not in the current year budget, right? However, the question was asked, which one of these positions are truly new positions as in it is not one of those positions that we froze? And that's what we were providing clarity on is that we know that in order to avoid layoffs and to balance our budget, we froze a number of positions and we had that discussion last year. We were freezing the positions, not eliminating the positions. We were literally we were literally not saying to the police department, you have X fewer police officers as a authorized head count. We were saying your head count stays the same. However, in this year, we are only funding this many positions. And so there is a terminology and I understand that we've been sort of tripping over that. I will commit to in the future, we will provide a definition document of what do we mean by restored? What do we mean by a new position, a frozen position, a vacant position? I also think that it's worth at a later timeframe, not when we're at budget time, talking a little bit more about how the personnel budget works and a vacant position is still a funded position and things like that. And I will actually say one of the things that will help us is one of the enhancement requests that's in the budget for a new HR management system that will manage all of our all of our personnel. If we can give you those reports in a very systematic and easy way, what's vacant on this date, what's a authorized position, what's frozen position? And so I'll just say I actually agree that they're all enhancement requests and that's how they were all articulated. I do think if I could support the city council, I'll bring back this document because we did talk about four items. And I did hear from a number of the council that you're close. And so again, based on where you've landed, it was as far as the ARPA funding, this is the total. That does not include the deputy director of community services, but it does include those four positions from Measure G and utilizing six hundred thousand to support baseline general fund services, so no longer taking that from Measure G. And the only remaining Measure G item that would not be covered is the three hundred thousand for the downtown streetscape. And I think the city council can decide to allocate from Measure G, pull from reserves, or a third item, which is to not take any action. And we will go back and further articulate to the Measure G committee the background on this item and then at a later date because this is this is not sort of time sensitive in a one-month, two-month thing. We can come back to the city council after having additional conversations with the committee.
Thank you, city manager, very much. Maybe you can leave that on the screen if you don't mind just for a minute. Can we get a can I go around with my colleagues and just say there's options one, two, and three as far as the three hundred thousand? So at least we can answer that and give part of our direction on that within our budget. So there were three options that the manager articulated on the three hundred thousand. That was to take it out of Measure G, one, two, take it out of reserves, and three was to allow staff to go back and articulate further with Measure G. Can I? Mr. Hamilton?
Since I brought it up, I'm happy to go first. I'm fine with taking no action on that tonight and going back to the to the committee. I'm partial to just using Measure G, but I'm also respectful of the committee and would want them to weigh in on it with having full information.
And I'll just I'll go next. I concur with that statement.
I concur.
Mr. Salazar and then Mr. Medina.
Yeah, I would just add that I think that if I'm hoping that the city manager could shed some light on that and they would agree that it's appropriate use.
Okay, so and I'm sorry, Mr. Salazar, were you good with option three?
I was concurring with the first two. Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you. Councilor Mason?
All right, I'm actually looking at the ballot language right now. What would be what's the time difference if we approve the capital reserve? And is that something that would get started any quicker, any more quickly than going back to the Measure G committee?
So I believe the question was, is there a timing issue with regard to if the city council does not appropriate a funding source for the three hundred thousand? You know, I would say if we come back within the first quarter of the fiscal year, there will not be any significant implication on timing. I will say candidly that with the current staffing in the community services department and the significant projects, this is a project that falls on the director's plate with not having additional support for the director and the director really helping to shepherd at this point Centennial Plaza, the Palsy Park improvements, the strong governance initiative around around the cultural and arts committee, as well as the biggest thing that the director is doing, which is partnering with the public works department to ensure that everything related to the RAC goes off, goes off without a hitch. That this project actually is, you know, somewhat on the back burner for the for the next few months. And that doesn't sort of, you know, address the other duties of the director as articulated in the memo. And so whether the three hundred thousand is allocated tonight or in a few months from now, I don't think that would have a significant impact on the work that would be done under this mission.
Thank you, city manager.
I think just from my, I guess, we've gone around, but I still think that for this year, you know, again, since we didn't use the funds last year for the street repair, I'm not opposed to having the conversation around Measure G and how they can be allotted with the committee. But I do think for this year, I would be okay with the use of the general fund capital reserve and the one-time initiative funds to move this forward and to ensure that the Measure G funds are really focused on what was advertised. Thank you.
Okay, well, I can see that we have a five oh not to use Measure G funds and I'm seeing a one for the capital reserve and I'm seeing I'm hearing four to have staff go back to the Measure G committee. Am I incorrect in my assessment? Okay, city manager, you have your direction on that item.
So am I.
Thank you. All right, folks, we're still back to the budget. I think we've cleared up everything on Measure G. We've cleared up everything on ARPA, granted confusion and definitions and managers already addressed those. City manager, what do you see that we have left?
So I think based on this document up here and the council's discussions, if the majority of the council is supportive of the allocations of ARPA as proposed on the screen with amended budget, I think we have enough to adopt the operating budget subject to these changes for ARPA, which is including the four positions that were to be funded from Measure G funded through ARPA, including the transfer of six hundred K funded through ARPA, the stormwater of one million funded through ARPA, and removing the deputy director position. With that, I think that if there's majority support for that, then that is the operating budget. And I'm saying that because I haven't heard any other discussions and I know we've had sort of four plus meetings on on the other items on the budget, but the real open items are the ARPA items.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you. I'm glad we're through all that. I had a few questions on the streets maintenance workers. I sent them into the city manager, kind of like the same idea with the parks workers, what will these workers be doing? And adding in, is any additional time going to be spent on keeping downtown a little cleaner?
Sure. Councilmember Medina, yes, as we articulated in one of the prior meetings, I believe it was Deputy Director Dennis Bosch that did mention that there would be restoration hours spent downtown for power washing and cleaning up downtown. In addition, the employee would be assigned to streets and help out with execution of our street maintenance responsibilities. I do not see Deputy Director Bosch on, but I do see Innen Director Ritchie on and Heywann, if you would like to add any additional information, please feel free. Looks like she is being brought into the room.
Yes, thank you, city manager.
And
Yes.
While Heywann is gathering her thoughts, I do want to mention that in prior years, this position had supported our abandoned waste or illegal dumping pickup. We are going to be launching a pilot program with Recology where they will support abandoned waste and illegal dumping. And so we are not factoring in a portion of the workload for abandoned waste as was defined before, which is staff would fill tickets from escu response. That work will be done by Recology. Staff will have to do some of the larger cleanups, but that work will no longer be there.
Okay, so the clarification was provided as to what an additional FTE worker could provide. It would restore four hours for San Mateo Avenue downtown area. It was reduced to two, so it was halved. Restore four hours of a two-man crew for Excel orders. So those are requests that come in through our community portal, which includes trash issues throughout the city. This was reduced to two hours, but it had to be supplemented due to daily complaints. And I would like to also echo that, you know, these are to bring back services that, you know, to a level. The restoration of the positions would, you know, help to provide staffing to hopefully provide, you know, additional restoration of services rather than additional services. These are things that were lost, you know, with the positions being lost, that the time spent in downtown, time spent trash pickup and Excel orders, they either take longer. So when we have work orders for traffic, the traffic work orders that the TSPC has, whether they be new loading zones or painting a red curb, those do generally take longer. And so we can see those happening more quickly so that ability to respond quicker to and complete streets and repairs as we get those as preventative maintenance and as well as the requests come in, street light pole repairs, banners, graffiti requests, removal requests, potholes, traffic work orders, red curb painting, those, you know, do need to be maintained once they're installed. The paint does not last forever and signs, of course, deteriorate, traffic markings. So as, you know, striking fades, the ability to restore those a little bit more quickly. USA markings, we are required that when we receive USA, we put those underground service alert before someone digs, they need to call and call USA to request those markings so that, you know, the person who's digging understands what's below ground. Completing training for new staff members and other requests from the divisions throughout the city.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Director Ritchie. And I know that Dennis is not here currently, but so the downtown work before COVID was a certain level and then it dropped and now it's with these two additional workers, it's going to be restored to, is that four hours a day?
It says restore four hours, two-man crew. So I believe that's looking like eight hours, two-man crew for four hours.
Okay, and that's definitely helpful. And I'm satisfied if that could be provided to us in writing, that would be definitely helpful. It's just Deputy Director Bosch isn't here, but I'm glad to see that that restoration is going to be made and especially in light of Recology doing this test pilot for the garbage pickups, that should free up additional time. So I am satisfied with the answer. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from colleagues on the operational portion of the budget? Councilmember Salazar.
I was looking through the position summary that Councilmember Mason had requested and I noticed that there was a section in there that is not funded by either of the one-time funds, either Measure G or the ARPA funds that has other funding sources. They all seem to be covered in something other than what we're bargaining with here. And so I wanted to offer that if we could move forward with those positions as part of the baseline, because these are funded elsewhere and not really dependent on the shifting of funds in the future, that that might be a path forward and that that group of positions includes three police officers, which might help with the concern the city manager had about delaying the positions. Just an option.
Thank you. City manager.
Sure, so I can invite the police chief to articulate with regard to the police positions because I think those three positions are the two for YouTube and the GIU position. And so Chief Johansson could articulate the service level impact that restoration of those two of those three positions would have compared to the other two positions that would be funded by ARPA.
And we do always appreciate hearing from Chief Johansson and I think the council member wasn't questioning that. He was just saying move that forward. But, sir, you're with us and we'd love to hear from you.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The quick answer to this is that two of those positions are the result of a cost recovery agreement that we were able to finally secure with YouTube, Google. The nice thing about this position is that it ultimately got articulated as the creation of a fourth beat or service area for the police torment rather than specific to the Google YouTube campus, which means that we have two fully funded police officers that are then out on the street to respond to all sorts of calls for service, albeit with a focus in that particular area that is sort of fenced in by San Bruno Avenue, Sneath Lane, Cherry. Cherry, and El Comino Real. So covering kind of that whole area that would be tantamount to a service area is really good for us to get these positions funded, because they're force multipliers. And these are more cops that can work overtime, that can work for cops who are injured or on vacation or in court. So that describes those two positions. And those two positions actually are, we've sort of already attempted to staff those, because the reality is that they have to be staffed with senior officers, but we have to have junior officers to backfill for those senior officers before they can be placed into those specialty positions. And so we have two officers currently attending the academy that we, those are two positions that were other vacancies, because we hadn't yet approved this budget, that are being held by positions in the academy instead of being officers out on the street. So it has had an impact on operations throughout the last few months, as we've had to go through backgrounds and hiring to get those two officers into a police academy in order to ultimately move officers into that Google YouTube position. The other position is GIU, which is the countywide gang intelligence unit. And given what was sort of a troubling increase in some gang activity in the community over the last, I would say, 12 to 18 months, I think this was a really great opportunity for us to secure a position with the county gang intelligence unit. It brings a lot more attention to the city of San Bruno from the gang task force, as well as from the intelligence unit as a whole, which handles more of the higher-end backend search warrant-related, intelligence-driven procedures that are critical to managing a gang problem. And the benefit of securing that position is that $90,000 of it is funded by the county every year, plus the cost of overtime and the cost of vehicle for that officer. So we do put a little bit of skin in the game in terms of cost there, but essentially it is funded. And so hopefully that provides some description of those three positions and why they do. I appreciate you, Councilmember Salazar, recognizing kind of the difference between those and the hard decisions you guys are faced with making this evening. Those are all essentially funded.
Yeah, great, sounds like a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. And as we all know too, it's, hiring for employees is challenging as well, but we also know obviously the background and other elements that do with our public safety, especially in our police. So, thank you for that explanation. Okay, with that, city manager, what do, what do you have left that we haven't tackled or you don't have guidance?
You know, really, for the city council, I think is sort of one decision, if you will. I think there has been majority of support for everything in the budget, with the exception of there hasn't really been a discussion on, is there majority of support for the ARPA proposal as presented? And if there is majority of support for this, then that is, I think you have majority of support to adopt the adopted budget. And so, that would be my recommendation to mayors, to see if you have majority of support for the ARPA proposal, because these are the open items that you've been talking about that you haven't settled on. And if you get through that, then I think you have majority of support for the operating budget, knowing that we would have subsequent conversations about long-term issues and strategies and stormwater, et cetera.
Okay, if you could leave that up, and I'd like to, I guess, if it's a yes, just say yes, or if it's a thumbs up, I can take that as well. I can't see all of you, but, Mr. Hamilton? Thumbs up? We do have a hand up for Mr. Salazar.
And I did want to make one comment. I do agree with most of what I see on this slide, with the exception that on the stormwater line, we filled a million-dollar hole this year, but there is a very obvious gap in subsequent years. And we balanced this budget at the expense of what we were told was a critical position that would be necessary for the success of the new rack, which is a $50 million crown jewel for the city. So, those two things are, to me, are huge, huge gaps in this budget. And so I really can't support moving forward and put the rest of this.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
I'm good. I'm ready to go forward with this. The stormwater is huge, obviously, it's a million-dollar hole each year. We're approving a one-year budget, and we're going to have to rely on our team to come up with how to fill that million-dollar hole each year. And we'll get there. But we are, I'm ready to support this budget.
Councilmember Mason? Councilmember Mason?
Sorry, it took a moment to unmute. I think with the changes that were made, I feel, I wouldn't say I'm, I'd say I feel comfortable with moving forward. I do think though that I'd prefer, and I'm hoping the council will support this, but that we not wait until next year to hear what the plans are going to be to continue to fund some of these, or all of these positions, actually. I think we all know that we've been short-staffed, we've had a deficit, and it's been at the expense of a lot of our staff. So I just want to say thank you to the staff that, you know, worked hard to put this together, but thanks also to the staff that's been working, in some cases, double duty to make up for people who retired or departments that have been short-staffed. And so, with the changes, I don't want to prolong, I know that the hiring process is going to take a little bit of time, but I do want to ask that we not wait a year to hear about the, how these are going to be funded next year, that we start having those conversations as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm more comfortable with it, and I think that's what Councilmember Salazar's biggest concern is, is not waiting. And very concerned on the stormwater, because it may not be a million. There's also other elements that probably have to be done, it could be more than a million, potentially. But that's just to get, that's just to keep it afloat, per se. That's not to actually move forward on capital improvement and other elements. So, I think that's where the council members, rightfully so, concern is. The staff, as long as I've been part of this city or a former employee, it's been a lean city. I've done a survey as to where you can go back and look at 10 years, and between the first year and then that 10th year, there's been no increase in staff in various divisions. Or it's decreased. Parks is a great example. Tell you, I came across a piece of paper about the 17 that used to be there. One seven. And so, the team really has stepped up. You had folks that stepped up when we, when folks chose to retire that had been here and served this community a long time, so that others would remain, which was just incredible. And then you had those, and then dealing with COVID. So, the, all of them, all of them have done a good job. And heck, I was a city employee, but I never had to work through COVID. So they had an extra burden to bear, and they've done it. So, it's appreciated. But I think I share with Councilmember Salazar the immediate concern about looking to the future sooner than later, and about we have to begin after this budget is approved, if it is approved, to start planning today for tomorrow. And we can't, we can't put it off. With that said, is there any other, you can, if you could, city manager, stop sharing the screen? Thank you. All right, any other, this is the resolution, the last one would be approving the operating and the capital improvement program budget. Any action by council?
For the mayor?
Yes, Mr. Hamilton?
I'd like to move to approve the fiscal year '21, '22 operating and fiscal year '21, '26 capital improvement program budget with the amendments as we have discussed this evening.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Hamilton, Medina, motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Very regrettably, I will vote no.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We are on conduct of business. Before we begin that, I'm going to ask the city manager, how long do you think this topic might take? Around?
15 minutes or less.
All right, with my colleagues' indulgence, I'd like us to continue.